Spirit to Zaragoza, Spirit to Zaragoza, a camanista. Oh, 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 oh,[1267.53] The project overall is expected to be completed by the end of this week, still a little bit more work to do with weather permitting. And then Parks will also be spraying the medians for weeds on El Camino. Traffic impediments, this week, roadwork is being completed in the areas of Hacienda and Portochi, I believe is the name is, Burtaki, and Guadalupe and Bonita. This work is expected to cause minor traffic slowdowns but will be completed soon, so all the residents in that area, please be aware. From our Milpitas Police Bureau, deputies from the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office...
That would be Millbrae, sir?
Excuse me? Millbrae? Thank you, Millbrae Police Bureau update? After 12 years, just muscle memory. Deputies from San Mateo County...
I feel bad. I called into a radio program once and they were like, "And Tina from Milpitas." And I'm like, "You mean Gina from Millbrae?" Yeah. It happens all the time, so go right ahead.
So, I apologize. So, the Millbrae Police Bureau update. Deputies from the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office were able to get a warrant and arrest a habitual trespasser and suspended, suspected arsonist. The person was arrested and suspected of entering a condominium building along the El Camino Real corridor to sleep, steal packages, and sometimes set fires to property. The suspect is in jail waiting preliminary hearing, and we want to thank the men and women of the Sheriff's Millbrae Police Bureau for diligent work to continue to keep our community safe. So, great work and thank you to the Sheriff's Department. A recreation update, the Millbrae Lions have donated $6,000 for a giant outdoor movie screen and video game system for the youth and youth programs here in the city. Millbrae Goes to Movies will launch on July 20th at Central Park with food trucks that will be onsite beforehand. The movie that will be premiering is Zootopia, 93% on Rotten Tomatoes, so good movie that everyone should look forward to. Central County Fire update, our Central County Firefighters Pancake Breakfast last weekend was a great success with proceeds helping to support the Alyssa Ann Rutch Burn Foundation. And the fire crews did host the Junior Fire Marshal Picnic here in Millbrae on May 31st. The kids have been great advocates for fire prevention and safety in their classroom and with all their peers, and the picnic was a way for the CCFD to show their appreciation for all the kids that participate in the program. And it's a great example, I think, for our youth to be able to participate in programs like that. And just in terms of statistics, Central County Fire responded 114 rescuing emergency medical calls for service in the city of Millbrae during the month of May. So, with that, Mayor and City Council, that concludes the report. I would like to move to overview of the agenda. So, the next item after this will be approval of the minutes for May 22nd, then oral reports from city committees and commissions. We have none this evening. The next item will be public communication. And then moving to our consent calendar, consent calendar, item number five is the approval of the amended bylaws for the San Mateo County Joint Library Joint Powers Authority and Second Amendment Joint Powers Agreement between the County of San Mateo and the cities of Atherton, Belmont, Brisbane, East Palo Alto, Foster City, Half Moon Bay, Millbrae, Pacifica, Portola Valley, San Carlos, and Woodside that are all together in the JPA for library services. Item number six is just a quarterly investment schedule for the third quarter for the fiscal year 2017-18. That's an informational item. Item number seven is appointments to city commissions and committees, and that is an action item. Next on the agenda, there are no public hearings this evening, so we move to existing business, item number eight, which is to receive a presentation on the current status of the conceptual design phase of the Community Center rebuild project, including a refined project cost estimate. And we would like that cost estimate to be by motion of the council and also by motion to provide direction for developing two conceptual design options and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with the Lou Edwards Group in amount not to exceed $40,000 for the purposes of conducting a second voter poll on public finance for a portion of the new community center construction. Under existing business, item number nine is budget adoption for the two-year operating and capital budget for fiscal years 2018-19 and fiscal year 2019 and 20. And that will be an action item to adopt the two-year budget this evening. Lastly, item number 10 is under new business, and that is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement to support Millbrae Community Television and an agreement for broadcasting, video, and channel management services by MCTV for fiscal years 2018-19 and 2019-20. So, with that, Mayor, that concludes the overview of the agenda.
Questions from the council?
I'd like to pull item, consent item number seven.
Any other questions from the council? Hey, do we have our approval of the minutes?
Madam Mayor, before you go on, I know it's not on the agenda, but we did call a special council meeting right before this regular meeting for a closed session. I thought it would be appropriate just to report out. That was a litigation closed session. The council discussed a case, that an existing lawsuit, dargod, versus State of California, City of Millbrae, and some other parties. The council discussed and authorized a settlement, which is not yet final, and so no reportable action at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine. Hey. Can we move on up? We do have a motion by Ms. Oliva, second by Mayor Pappan. Your votes, please, on the minutes of May 22nd.
The minutes of May 22nd are approved with a vote of four zero, and Vice Mayor Lee is excused.
We have no oral reports, and we have one public communication. Wynne, you're on. And I'm sorry, you can't see the little lights there, it's blocked by the monitor, so...
Way to move up?
Yeah, sure, go ahead. Don't start her clock yet, she's moving the... You can see it over here, too.
Oh.
You all right?
Yes.
Go for it.
My name is Wynne Gersich, and I'm here tonight to tell you about an activist that is known globally. Her name is Deborah Taveras, and she is telling about what the government's doing to depopulate. And if you know anything about Loren Moray, she is a scientist that is a radiation specialist, and she also did the beryllium leak in Lawrence Livermore Lab. And when you listen to Deborah Taveras and Loren Moray on YouTube, you can hear what's happening with this Fukushima. Fukushima hasn't gone away, and when the radiation first hit this country, you know, when Fukushima blew up, it hit Washington and Vancouver area and came down over Washington State and then into Oregon and down here. So, we do have some Fukushima stuff happening here, and there are, you should all get a radiation meter, believe me. And I would really recommend not eating fish from the ocean or even the bay. But what's kind of interesting is that Dr. Barry Trower, when he's talking about the 5G microwaves, Barry Trower is on YouTube, and everybody needs to hear this, because what the cities are implementing, and these are assault weapons, these 5G cell towers that they're putting up on the poles, they claim that there's no testing or that everything's safe. Well, it's not, and they know this, because certain frequencies can do all kinds of things to change the cellular growth in your body, you know, that they can, they can shut down your bowels with one frequency, they can do all kinds of things. They can give you cancer, diabetes, you name it, they give any disease they want. They can also put voices in your head, thinking that you're hearing God, almost like you're schizophrenic. And they target people with this, they can not only just give them cancer, bring them to their knees, they can make people very violent, they can turn people into killers. And if you really need to listen to Dr. Barry Trower on the 5G radiation, because he is a specialist that worked in the British Navy in the 1950s and 60s, he's gone globally trying to get other countries not to use this. And what's happening right now in China, you know, you heard the same thing that happened in Cuba, where the people in the US Embassy in Cuba were having ringing in their ears and all these problems, and they're now doing it in China? Those are microwaves, frequencies. And what happened in the 70s, they actually practiced it in Medford, Oregon. They shot these frequencies over the people up there, they were testing on it, and 75 people killed themselves within three days, and none of them had anything in common except they were in the range of the frequencies. This stuff has been tested on us for years, and they know how bad this is. And when they're allowing this to be put in front of your house, and then you also have all this Wi-Fi radiation, the water meters, the smart meters, this is killing you. And it's also, when the city councils are implementing the LED lights to put in your neighborhoods or on the streets at night, they have a blue light, and that blue light causes you, what it does is it causes you to go blind, and also that it causes you not to be able to regenerate, your serotonin and melatonin doesn't happen in your body, so when you're sleeping, you can't go to sleep. Many people can't sleep anymore because of these LED lights. These need to be banned.
Thank you, Wynne.
Okay. We have item five, six, and item seven has been pulled of the consent calendar. Do we have a motion on these two items? We have a motion by Ms. Oliva and second by Ms. Schneider. Your votes on item five, which is the approval of amended bylaws for the San Mateo County Library Joint Powers Authority, and item six, quarterly investment schedule. Your votes, please?
Items number five and six on the consent calendar pass with a vote of four to zero with Vice Mayor Lee excused.
Okay. Ms. Schneider, do you have a question about item seven?
We're being asked to vote on a number of committees and commissions, and I'm okay with all of them.
Your mic, is it on, please?
We're being asked to vote for a number of new representatives on a number of committees and commissions, and I'm okay with all of them, with one exception, Economic Vitality. Councilman Lee, or Vice Mayor Lee and I were on that committee last year, and at the time, we had some really good candidates from Planning Commission who didn't make Planning Commission, and with Angela, we had talked about them potentially going to Economic Vitality, but at that time, Wayne wanted only people who had a business in or around Broadway to serve on the committee, so we went over people like Armar Desai, who's a longtime Millbrae resident, who has a business here in Millbrae, he works from home. His business is to help brick-and-mortar retail work in the e-commerce area, but because Wayne wanted an actual business for the BID, potential BID, to get somebody from downtown, we didn't choose those, we didn't bring them forward. And now, we're being asked to vote on a candidate who may be a great person, but their business is in Burlingame. They may live here, but their business is in Burlingame, so it's just a change in the philosophy. Do we want businesses, Millbrae businesses, to serve on Economic Vitality or just the general public?
Ms. Oliva, since you're on the subcommittee?
Actually, it was a subcommittee. I was on my own here, so I just want to say, before I answer specifically that question, the amount of applicants that came out was like of a caliber that I can't even explain how beautiful they were. I mean, we should be really proud of what we attracted to this interview. And Margaret did interview incredibly well with a lot of enthusiasm and ideas towards the economic development, or economic vitality for the downtown. So, she was maybe not having a business with regards to location in Millbrae, but she is a businesswoman, so I think that she can bring that mentality to this committee and be very, very helpful.
I don't disagree with that, but I would like to wait for Councilman Lee to be back to vote on this particular one, because we had, and we had a long conversation with Angela about this, and in fact, I do believe when you were mayor, Reuben, I passed this past you, to look at businesspeople of Millbrae.
Well, I would disagree with you in this regard because of a couple of other things. There's actually, there were, was somebody on one of the other committees who was an engineer that wanted to apply for, let me see where I can find him. There was, he was completely, completely different from what his day job was to what he wanted to help out in the city, because people have fortes that are maybe not what they do every day, but they have hobbies or desires that they'd like to enrich our city with. So, I would venture to believe that not everybody here, other than the seniors being seniors and the youths being youths, did they have to fit a criteria. We didn't have a prerequisite, we didn't have any, anything that was in writing that they had to have.
And yet Wayne and I did.
Okay, well, all right, hold on, people, please. So, we've heard two proposals here, we've heard Ms. Oliva. Mr. Hollibur, do you have an opinion regarding this?
Yeah, I mean, we did have this discussion last year. Personally, I'm a bit ambivalent regarding the, you know, should we have people from downtown Millbrae or people from, who don't necessarily have a business downtown? I think it's good to have a combination of both, both perspectives. I do think Councilman, or Vice Mayor Lee would like to, would probably want to be involved in this discussion, and if we weren't able to have the full subcommittee present to do interviews, then...
But he was part of my discussion.
He was involved in the interviews?
100%.
No, he was involved in the interviews or the discussion?
All right, wait, I'm losing control here, people. Let's get back to the center, okay? So, you're ambivalent, I am for diversity here, I understand that there was prior discussions, but I'll work with Ms. Oliva here, that she was in contact with Mr. Lee, and I think it's important that we do have some diversity, and someone who actually has a business in Burlingame may be extremely important with the BID, because they went through that, so it might be extremely helpful to us.
The business is down, it's north Bay Shore, isn't it?
Well, as part of my interview, she was very, very knowledgeable about the BID that was going on in Burlingame.
I would just ask to separate the votes, because I'll be a no vote on this.
All right, I'll make the motion.
Can I make a comment, too?
Okay.
Not about this particular committee, but the consent.
Oh, go right ahead.
I just, being that we did have such incredible applicants, I hope that you guys did notice another change from last year was the alternates, and that was our city manager who had that idea that was brilliant, I thought, because we had, I would have had to eliminate one youth advisory committee, and the kids were just of great high standard to that, and I hated to do that. So, what that'll allow is for Alyssa to attend all meetings, sit at the table, and if somebody's not there, to vote. And we also had a senior advisory committee member, Lenore Ann Jones, who has done incredible things with the senior committee already, and I'm happy to see that she'll be at that table, and I will tell you that I'm on that, I'm a liaison to that committee, and rarely is there ever a full table, there's usually somebody that's missing, so at that point, she'll be able to sit at the committee at every meeting, if somebody's missing, she'll be able to vote as well.
Thank you. Mr. Hollibur?
Well, feeding off of that, maybe, you just mentioned there were several high-quality candidates for Economic Vitality. Would it be a good idea to have an alternate for that committee as well? Because I know in the past, they've had trouble making quorum.
There was no other applications for that, that committee would...
That was the only applicant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's not what I understood, that you said before.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the only application I had.
Oh, okay.
A motion, do we have, yes?
I'm sorry, so just reading through the applicant, the business is Man Global Development, they're on Bay Shore Highway, I'm not sure they would have voted for a BID unless they put a BID down on Old Bay Shore, which is not my understanding of what Burlingame did. So, direct experience in BID, liking the idea is great, but direct, okay. Well, just the mayor had said, you know, she's had direct experience, or anyway. I had a point. As I said, I just want to separate the votes. There is one other comment...
I don't understand by separating the votes, you can...
I want to vote for everybody else. I have no problems with everybody else, but I will, I'm going to vote negative on the Economic Vitality position. And I just want to report, too, that we've had consistent problems in quorum for cultural arts, and we need to be looking at attendance for cultural arts. So, if that can go back to the committee.
All right, I have a motion and a second. We will take out the one committee for a secondary vote. Do you have your votes on? Everybody else, please? Do you have that?
Item number seven passes with a vote of four zero with Vice Mayor Lee excused. This is with the exception of...
Economic Vitality.
Economic Vitality.
All right, now we'll vote on Economic Vitality.
Sorry, Councilman Oliva, can you, once I can clarify, there was only one applicant for Economic Vitality in this cycle?
Except the applications from a year ago are still valid. These were interviews last August and September, they're supposed to exist for a year, so there wasn't a single applicant, there were applicants from last summer.
What I had in front of me was one application.
All right, we have a vote. Mayor Pappan, do we have a second? Anybody? Mr. Hollibur, your votes, please?
Item number seven, regarding Economic Vitality, passes with a vote of three to one, with Councilmember Schneider opposing, and Vice Mayor Lee is excused.
Okay. Moving on to existing business, we have item eight, receive a presentation on the current status of the conceptual design phase of the Community Center rebuild project, including a redefined project cost estimate. And everybody runs to the podium. I like that. Elena, you're going to have to redo those letters, that had the letter heads wrong, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm happy to present Dawn from Group Four, who will make this presentation this evening, bring us up to date.
Thank you, Ms. Elora.
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Dawn Marcus with Group Four Architecture. Happy to give you an update this evening on the progress for the new community center. Quick agenda, hopefully getting right to the point. We wanted to summarize the outreach to date, and one of the things we did want to weigh in with you before we start the next phase of the conceptual design is to look at emerging project design values.
Okay, hold on. Let me clarify what this proposal is about to the viewing public here. The primary goal of this council is to rebuild a community center. That is our one and only goal at this point in time, is to hopefully break ground by next year with a community center that we can service the public with and just be very proud of, because the longer we wait on any of this, the more costs go up. So, we have narrowed previous projects, our goal is a community center, and Dawn has reached out to the public in various aspects, so please go right ahead.
All right. Basically, as we're working in this current task, which is the conceptual design phase of the project, concurrent with that is working for looking at funding and implementation. From that, the project can move through design and into construction. So, right now, right here, in the conceptual design phase, concurrent simultaneously, we understand the city's looking at funding and implementation. So, in the conceptual design work, we are right here, kind of concluding round one of the community's input, and what the community's been giving us great feedback on is what we call design values. And this is inspiration for direction for the architects as we develop both the building's architecture and the site that's associated with the rebuild of the community center. And I'll go over into that in a site plan in just a minute. And we have been very busy, as we look at the outreach, over 2,900 people have given us input to date, starting with the community meeting in an open house, after which we had a little bit of pause, because we had some refinements to do in terms of the design values, which we then incorporated before we launched with an online survey and the rest of the outreach, and really tremendous engagement from the community, really amazing inputs. When we went to the farmer's market, we did have Chinese interpreter working with us, as with self-help for the elderly, so a lot of bilingual input, senior input, young input from the middle school kids, Lion's Pancake, I think Tom was there helping facilitate the boards on Saturday, and then we are continuing with the outreach for design values at movie night this Friday. So, 900 people weighing in on the design values, and the titles really are a little bit, I wouldn't say generic, but I think it's more important to look at the images that people weighed in on, and I'll share those with you in just a minute on the following slide. And so, as we look at park context, having almost 1,200 votes for that, followed by traditionally inspired, modern California, and contemporary traditional. But what really does that mean in terms of design values? What should we look to as we start developing the conceptual design for the next phase of the project? The biggest vote getter are these images that you see here in order of their votes, people actually putting votes on these dots. So, as we look at option image one, two, and three, those are park context images in that category. The next one, four, was traditionally inspired, then five is park context, six is contemporary traditional, and seven is park context again. So, a really nice complement of design values for us to draw from as we move forward, and I'll show you kind of a storyboard of our interpretation of that in a minute. As we look at the site design values, curve linear or natural, much closer, 56 to 44%, lot of preferences in the different design values, kind of going across the boards for this one. You did not have to just vote in one category on these design values, and you can see here, number one and two were both the Passaeos. People were really engaged and really liked the idea of this indoor-outdoor concept, these outdoor rooms complementing indoor spaces, kind of engaging landscape that you see in three, the warm and inviting park spaces that you see in four, and then five is open space, and six is play structure inspirations. So, as we look at moving forward, what we're looking for from the council tonight is confirmation that we developing our two conceptual design options that we'll bring back to the community and to the council and to the commissions and boards, is that we build off of the design values that you see on the left for the building and that you see on the right for the site. As we look at the park context images on the top one, really thinking what people were drawn to was how the opening, the building opened up and engaged the park, the outdoor rooms that were created along the Passaeo, and then the spaces that were both indoor and outdoor complementary is the, you see in the porch there, and then the massing and scale, that human scale that you see in the traditionally inspired massing materials in the fifth image, and then on the bottom, just talking about entry. Those images specifically are about entry, both an entry focal point and one that's warm and inviting. Then looking at the site, that building and landscape integration, especially along the Passaeo, really important, interactive public spaces, spaces for people to play, open passive space with engaging landscape. And so, those are the ones that we feel are the priorities of your community as we move forward into conceptual design, and we'd like your confirmation that we should draw on these as we move forward.
Council's kind of at a disadvantage here, as you can see, some are struggling to view this, and it's not coming up on our computers. So, maybe we want to just take a brief break, make sure everybody gets a good view of what the public input has been on this. At the same time, to the public before us here, the price tag for this has been greatly reduced. reduced. The project, we hope, again, we can work with the public and break ground with next year, is at $30 million. Insurance will cover a portion of that. We are looking at other funding sources to bring that down even further so that the impact on the public will be minimal and we can work with everyone so that we can make this a reality. So why don't we just take a five-minute break and I encourage my council members to please work with Dawn, go through, get a close look at what's happening there as we progress. And we want to throughout, really, it's important that the whole council becomes a part of all this moving forward here and the public engagement. So I understand this is brief and we went through this quickly, so let's just take a five-minute break. Everybody, please take a close look.
And just as a reminder, because we've done several of these workshops before, you know, just because you like a certain idea or you don't like a certain idea isn't exactly what the building is, would eventually look like. It likely would be some type of a combination, a hybrid of these various designs that are presented here.
And that's kind of why they were numbered. So hopefully there'll be some sort of a blending of what the public has emphasized as their priorities moving forward here. And we'll hope to get this on the website as well, as quickly as possible, because it's not coming up on our computers. So let's just take a five-minute break, please, and everybody go take a look.
So do you think these are the results of this?
Yeah.
We can have all these what we want.
He said it to me at the end of the day. Do you want to?
We're trying to get this up on our computers. And she's got it and we're trying to get it to hard drive. Whose turn was it to watch him? Got to keep track of the young'un. All right, so as we go through this and wait for Mr. Holliver to get back, it was nine hundred's a very impressive number of reach out, I will say, I saw at the baseball Lions Club Pancake Breakfast, a whole bunch of people engage of all ages. And one of your staff members was there just answering questions. Nobody was guided or pushed in any directions. It was interesting to see how it came out and we will continue to take the input here. Everybody also has a hard copy to your left, Mr. Holliver. So again, does, now that you all have it in front of you, there's a hard copy there for you, Anne, too. It might be easier. Okay. So it's, again, very interesting to see what the public preferences are.
Yeah. And just to reiterate that as we look at each of these design values, we were translating, you know, the dots per the images, not just the titles. And under each of those titles, there's four images. So under the traditional inspired, there's four images. Under the park context, there's four images. And then that's what summarized here on the building design values, the preferred images, which as we've summarized on the kind of storyboard for the direction that we would like confirmation of tonight, is the building in sight that you see here. Now, even within this, we still have two conceptual design options that we'll be developing. And so it will, one can go in one direction and another in another direction. And so there's still options and there's still the next round of engagement to the community where we can be more sensitive to the human scale, to the breaking down of the massing, how we deal with those indoor-outdoor spaces on one option versus another options. And so the options aren't done in terms of the refinement. Design is iterative and being able to reach out to the community, as well as your council and your boards and commissions, to really get everybody engaged and start developing ownership of the rebuild is really the goal here with the project. So I can either continue on and give you the rest of the project update and then we can come back to that. Does that sound appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. And so Phase One, Community Center Rebuild Project, is basically the quadrant that you see up here on the top left. And that is the rebuild of the community center. The rest of the conceptual design for the master plan of the park is complementary to that and will be a subsequent phase. So really focusing on rebuilding the community center, 25,000 square foot community center that is a full complement in terms of programs and services in the amenities in the community center. A big opportunity to add and improve community hall, the licensed preschool daycare, fitness studio, things that you don't have, game room, classrooms, art room, conference room, consultation room, senior lounge, and the large community room. So really a beautifully balanced program, both for programs and services and revenue generation. You know, looking at being sustainable, not just environmentally, but operationally. Something for everybody as we look at mapping the programs and services into the building, really being able to serve the children, the youth, the young adults, the adults, as well as the seniors. Looking at how the community center rebuild project happens in that quadrant and doing the overlay of the project plan for this next intermediate phase of the project, as the master plan was developed, this was always kept in mind. How do we do this in a way biting off in chunks so that it can be affordable and implemented by the community? So you can see Phase One is the new community center, an updated parking lot, reusing and improving the existing parking lot that is on what I'll call the south side of the park off of Laurel, and really then just blending into the rest of the existing amenities. And as we look at what Phase One includes, it includes the demolition of one tennis court, demolition of the existing community center pad, which you can actually see underneath here. You can see how we're shifting the building back a little bit, regaining some parkland, which is great, more open space. We're improving the parking lot that is off of Lincoln and right here in this north, I'll call it northwest quadrant, as well as the existing parking lot. This parking lot here off of Lincoln in that northwest quadrant will be completely new, completely redone. And what we'll do on the existing parking lot is just improve it, resurface it, add new curb gutters where we need to, but really just improve it because it's a pretty good location and it actually serves the community center where it's proposed to be. The new community center, 78 parking spaces on the Lincoln surface parking lot, 47, will be planned for the reuse of the existing parking lot. The outdoor spaces that are adjacent to the building in the paseo, as well as the community hall patio, those are all part of Phase One. The estimated budget, the updated budget right now for that is 30 million. And here is the summary of how that breaks down, including FFNE, soft costs, project contingency, as well as escalation. One of the things that we understand the importance of getting this community center rebuilt for the community. And so one of the things, working with city staff and working with Peter and working with Key and trying to see how we can shave time off, the time to get this building rebuilt, is looking at adding an earlier site package. And that would be done next summer. So starting to break ground next summer on the early site package, going in, preparing the pad for the building, looking at where the utilities are, and really getting that ready to go so when the construction documents come out of permit check and are going to be bid at the end of 2019, ready to start construction in 2020 on the building. And so that's a really aggressive schedule, but a very nice way to actually take a little bit of heat off the construction schedule. Because if you start the construction schedule with your pad already done and it's a schedule that's a little bit more relaxed than if you just tag it on and tie it in with the building, it takes a little bit of risk out of it for the city as well. And so that's what the proposed schedule is that we show up here on the board right now. So looking at finishing schematic design, then concurrently with developing, design development for the building, doing the early site package, going out to bid on the site package while we're finishing construction documents on the building. And then once the building construction documents are permitted and approved, doing bidding on that and starting construction on that. So that's the current updated schedule, construction budget, and where we're at in the project. Next steps, basically we'll be doing round two input on two conceptual design options. So that is our summary report for tonight.
Okay, and we do want to emphasize that this is just the, we're heading into the design aspect of it, but the structure in and of itself appears to be quite a beautiful building, a two-story building overlooking the park, taking advantage of the entire park, which we haven't done before, a community room that can be divided in three different ways, a commercial kitchen, which will also add to the sustainability, something that can be rented out for special events. One of the most heartbreaking things about losing our previous community center was that somebody was going to have their wedding reception there the next day. So the demand for a large community room is regionally needed, as is the element there of the childcare, is it, what are we calling it exactly?
Licensed preschool daycare.
A licensed preschool daycare, which we hope to reach out to some of the corporations to help fund. So the funding aspect of all these different elements is extremely important to all of us, in addition to the insurance that's out there, structurally fitting this so that we can break ground. She has mentioned the 30 million. Right off the top there will come the insurance money and some developer fees. So we're really reducing the price as much as we possibly can and we will be seeking both community input, community funding, partners, corporate, private funding throughout this. So when we get to that point as to the final price tag to the residents of Millbrae, we hope that it's going to be way down there, that we can actually break ground next summer, as you said here, and move ahead with this because the community need is so great. So Schneider, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say, I'm pretty sure that Supervisor Carol Groom mentioned that there is county funding to build daycare. So hopefully we've added that to our potential source of funds.
We will be reaching out. The Board of Supervisors, our own supervisor, Dave Pine, assisted us with the replacement temporary facilities and we hope to reach out to the Board of Supervisors. We have a long list and we're open to other suggestions.
This isn't their discretionary fund pool, which is how Dave Pine paid us. This is a different set of funds that is competitive. So we should start working on it now.
Yeah, she was there yesterday at the library, too, and corporate sponsors as well. structurally fitting this so that we can break ground. She has mentioned the $30 million. Right off the top there will come the insurance money and some developer fees. So we're really reducing the price as much as we possibly can and we will be seeking both community input, community funding, partners, corporate, private, funding throughout this. So when we get to that point as to the final price tag to the residents of Millbrae, we hope that it's going to be way down there, that we can actually break ground next summer, as you said here, and move ahead with this because the community need is so great. So, Ms. Schneider, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to say, I'm pretty sure that Supervisor Carol Groom mentioned that there is county funding to build daycare. So hopefully we've added that to our potential source of funds.
We will be reaching out. The Board of Supervisors, our own supervisor, Dave Pine, assisted us with the replacement temporary facilities and we hope to reach out to the Board of Supervisors. We have a long list and we're open to other suggestions.
This isn't their discretionary fund pool, which is how Dave Pine paid us. This is a different set of funds that is competitive. So we should start working on it now.
Yeah, she was there yesterday at the library too and corporate sponsors as well. We're going to reach out to every aspect that we possibly can to ensure that all aspects of this facility are as funded as possible. So we will pursue that as well. We've also been looking at Boys and Girls Clubs, YMCA, for different partnerships as we move forward. So everything's key. We welcome all input along those lines. The goal is to really try again to make this a reality as quickly as possible and as efficiently as possible because that is so important to, I know, the community as well. Questions? I really want to thank everyone throughout the city of Millbrae as far as their response and their input on the design aspects and everything. We do acknowledge, yes, on Saturday, again, the swimming pool kept coming up and a dog park and all these different aspects. We understand that. Park and Rec and city staff are working on those other aspects to really utilize existing facilities and working with the city of San Bruno, who is rebuilding their pool. We have the high school pools, we have the Meadows Pool. So the swimming pool aspect is not being ignored. This is our primary focus, is the community center and getting that rebuilt. But we do clearly understand the public's need and want for aquatics and a dog park. We get all that. But this is where we have to focus right now to make this a reality and a very exciting opportunity for the city of Millbrae. Mr. Holber, anything?
Yeah, you know, I think, and one of the things that we are including in this report is to look at polling again because when we polled previously, it may have been a mistake, starting with the $72 million number, which is quite an imposing figure. And that was really meant to be at the high end of everything involved in the master plan, improving the park, redoing the tennis courts above the parking, moving the maintenance facility to Green Hills. So while that was ambitious, it was not necessarily realistic to all, to be able to fund all of that at one time. So, you know, I think the master plan is great. It's a wonderful long-term plan. It's not necessarily what we want to do all at once. And really, the focus was on rebuilding the actual building itself, the community center, the recreation center building. And that's what we're looking to do. And as the mayor mentioned, there are a number of other funding options that we're looking to reduce the overall cost so that, you know, taxpayers aren't on the hook for the full amount.
Okay, this is just an overview. I know when we met the last time when it was a combined park and rec, I had a concern that the second floor is going to look at the roof of the community center. Is that still the same?
No, that is not. That is one of the things that we are addressing in the massing model that we're working on. And so the second floor and the balcony from the second floor actually is turned, looks over the passeo and out to the park.
So we lose the view then of the bay?
No, you do not lose the view of the bay because the view of the bay is all along this side. So you have the view of the bay from the community hall and then you have a view of the bay from the second floor, which is also just turned a little bit to the south and it's not looking over the same. So there's a bend in the building, if you will, at the passeo a little bit so that the second floor is looking slightly to the southeast.
And when you do the public outreach, is that clear? Is that understandable so people do understand what it is they're voting on?
They will def, so they're not voting on that yet because we're only looking at design values with the public right now. So the next phase will be the floor plan and the massing model where we'll be able to do a fly-around 3D massing model. You can actually see the entire building in 3D in context.
Okay.
And so it's at that point where we'll have two options for the floor plans and two options for the massing model.
But we already looked at sort of two different floor plans, senior center over here and senior center over there.
Right, and so those are going into the refined floor. Those were bubble diagrams, adjacency diagrams that we got input on and those will be reflected in the two floor plans that are the next.
And my apologies, still pretty much set that the senior center's going to be on the second floor?
So just in order, the comment about the senior program spaces because it is a multi-generational center and the spaces are being designed to be flexible, to accommodate programming for different, the classrooms can accommodate senior programs as well as program for the youth. But the senior lounge and the primary program spaces that the seniors will be using during the day are on the second floor. They would still do their lunch programming on the first floor where the community hall is. And that's really about separation in terms of zoning of activity level. The first floor having the community hall there, the kitchen, the dance and fitness room, the game room, as well as early childhood recreation preschool rooms is very active. And a lot of kids coming and going after school with conflicts, potentially for more of the quieter activities that we are segregating on the second floor.
So it seems like that's the direction we're going. My one concern is we have an earthquake, we have all electric systems down, we've got people in wheelchairs or walkers. How are we getting them down?
So just as you look at any senior housing on the peninsula now that is multi-story, there's very few, real estate is so valuable right now that you will find, you're hard to find pressed, except perhaps in the Central Valley, single-floor senior residential, senior-floor medical facilities, anything along those lines. So just part of your building code, there's an evacuation plan for the second floor when electricity and the elevator is out. And that is something that's an operational plan, that's implemented by staff. And it can be complemented by having assisted use exiting on stairs where you have exit along your railing. You actually have a chair that can be put onto that to assist to get people down.
You know, my fear is that one example that you took us to where the elevator was this dark gloomy space on the second floor and that rec center had piled stuff into the hallway and it was so uninviting. I think it had the lovely swales on the park side of the building and then it went against a commercial street on the other side. But I still have nightmares about that elevator. My dad was an elevator engineer. So I just didn't like the feel of that and trying to get people through in the event of an emergency when we are a heavily senior-populated community. So if we can make sure that there are reasonable plans and reasonable lighting, I'll be more open to that. But that is my, one of my greatest concerns.
Understood, and definitely we'll follow up and get more detail for you on that.
Okay.
And I think it's important to emphasize too, the way it's set up now, it would really be very open into the quad area so that the whole second floor is going to have a lot of natural light and the way it appears to be blossoming into something. We look forward to that. There were certain conflicts in the old building between the age groups and some annoyances. So the slight separation, yet integration for various programs, I think, is important. And as you said, there are a lot of versatility in anything that's being put into this new building, which is exciting as far as how much we can cover and input here. And the way it's set up to lessen the wind, which is notorious for Millbrae and becoming so extreme. Is it just me? I mean, it's really getting bad, but that is a major part.
That is part of our work. So we're actually been working and doing wind studies on the massing models that we've developed so far and are able to tweak and adjust the building massing to protect outside spaces, entries, as well as walkways. So that's very exciting. The technology is very nice to be able to do the solar and wind studies as we're developing these models.
It's key. And what's fairly nice is the integration between indoor and outdoor, that we'll have that versatility. So there'll be a big patio, it looks like, that goes, merges with the park aspect of it for larger entertaining and aspects of this key building. Heaters, air conditioning, yeah, all kinds of things. It is quite exciting and it's very interesting to see what the public input has been on this, particularly the little kids this weekend. They go real crazy with their dots. And it was nice to see that you hit the middle school and the turnout there. Tweens are, we had no idea what they were going to like or dislike, but it's quite interesting here. And the aspects of having a licensed daycare facility is extremely important. So you'll notice when you do look at the different setup of the building, there are certain regulations as to where that daycare center is going to be in the nursery school. So they have to have their own little play area and it has to be structured in such a way that the children are protected. So, any other questions? Exciting times. Ms. Aliva?
I was just going to compliment everybody's hard work. I know you, the subcommittee worked very hard on this too, with incredible job from.
And the advisory committee.
The advisory committee.
Yeah.
And the entire council, the planning commission, everybody has been, I mean, this is a community effort, which is extremely exciting.
900 is a great turnout.
Oh, and they're going to get some more too. So, very interesting.
Yeah, and based on that though, just wanting to get moving on, developing those conceptual options, looking for the confirmation of the emergent design values for us to work with these, to refine these models that we're working at and to bring two conceptual design options back in Round Two. We're looking for that tonight and then also the project budget, the $30 million. And what else are we looking for, Peter?
The survey.
The survey, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Schneider?
So the two, can you define the two conceptual designs you're asking us to let you go forward with?
No, because the two conceptual designs are done yet. But what I'm asking for is based on these design values that we've been weighed in by your community and we feel are giving us clear direction at this point because at the end of the week is when the survey closes. And so it's, it's pretty well, the direction is set going pretty clearly, we think, towards these design values as you look at the voting that we've received so far. It would take a tremendous amount of activity on the online survey and you would have to have a lot of people coming to the movie on Friday night to really change where this direction we're feeling is going. Plus, we think this direction is excellent. We, the values.
But I'm confused. Does that mean that we're looking at traditional design or we're looking at California contemporary? I don't understand that.
So my suggestion is that we take the titles off of the values at this point and we are translating these images, which the community has waited on because they really don't care if it's park context, if it's traditionally-inspired. That's not what they voted on when they put their dot. They put their dot on these images because they reflected values that they could relate to.
But this is where you and I disagree. If you give people pictures, as this entire process has done, almost every picture was modern in design or contemporary in design. Now, they may like the open patio feel, but an open patio feel can be in a traditional architectural style, it can be in a contemporary, it can be an Eichler, it could be in any of those things. So to me, we have led people by the types of photographs we have shown. So I have no problem with saying those seven building concepts. Okay, I understand the concepts, but if you take that and say that comes out as California contemporary, I don't agree with that.
Okay, and I.
I'm only one vote, but I'm telling you, I don't, I won't vote for that design. I won't vote for that architectural design.
If I might, Ms. Schneider, please. So I understand what you're saying there and I'm sorry, we don't have all the boards up. But there were, there was a vast, there was your traditional, there were all kinds of things that people got to put their little dots on. And the only thing, and the best way to approach this, is that as Group Four has done here, they are weighing the different aspects. There is no forcing, you know, you can't have this and you can't. I wish you had them all here so that we could see.
They're on the online survey, I mean, that.
It's true. So it's, it's just meld, it's melding, or what's the word I'm going to?
Melting.
Melting these aspects together that the architects will do to come up with designs. It's, we're not going to recreate one that's already built. So the idea is to, this was the emphasis of the public. It's up to the architects now to meld this all together and to come up with something unique for Millbrae to evaluate and look at and. That too. But yeah, we just can't point to one thing here and nor did the public want that. They were specific in kind of, I like this aspect and I like that aspect. And now we get to see where the professional architects can come up with something that hopefully mixes everything together in such a way that we get in a really nice building. Yes.
Can we talk about the $40,000 for a little bit?
I'd be happy to vote for that. I mean, if we want to just knock that one off.
What are you talking about?
I'm not calling for the vote. I just want to, the $40,000 is going to go for a survey and wouldn't that be completed and can you maybe give some details on that?
That's more related to the funding at this point and we haven't, well, we haven't finalized the exact amount here. So we are going to, right off that $30 million comes the insurance money, comes developer fees, so it's not really $30 million. It's coming down by what? What does that one number, those two numbers?
So there, we're looking at, the money that we have in hand is developer contribution as well as insurance settlement, so around nine or 10 million there. Another, we're looking at sale of surplus property and so we're hoping the number is more in the $12 million range that we need to bring out to the public to consider supporting the project. So the $40,000 contract is a follow-up to polling. So in December we polled, as Mr. Holber mentioned, we polled on the full master plan, the $72 million number, and did not receive a level of support that would bring us into an election. And so now that we've really focused in the project, we're looking at going back in a poll to see if the public supports this more focused project at a smaller dollar level to bring something to the voters in November.
Well, and the key too is with that amount, reaching out to the public, is to clarify the message here. I understand the public was very disturbed. So were we at that first round that happened here. But our goal is to focus on one structure here, to redo and restore a vital community resource. And that's it, that's all. So what we're talking about is how we get to break ground next year and we need to know if the public agrees with that and how we can go about it. So we're still looking, again, we'll be reaching out to all kinds of other funding sources, but we need to kind of finalize the message moving forward because this message is not going to change. A community center is what, a vital resource that we need and that's it. That's all we're seeking at this point in time. So we need to know if we, how far we can get in the funding on our own and then will the public assist in the remainder?
That's why I was asking. So I want to know, like, we're going to approve in this, what's in front of us, up to $40,000 for a poll. And when would that take place and what is the message? So that's exactly where I was going.
Yeah, and we don't know what the exact message is until we analyze all the funding aspects and how low we can bring the reality of making it happen.
So the poll is different than the survey in that it's a targeted, random set of actual voters versus, you know, for example, students at school, that type of thing. We would be actually working with the consultant to help design the questions. Some of it may be, for example, proposed battle language may be similar to what we looked at before, but just working out what that final number is. But we would be, through that contract, we would rely on the expertise of a consultant in that type of elections consulting and. in that type of elections consulting and, and polling.
So if we approve up to the $40,000 tonight, when would that process start?
We're trying to move it very quickly, so before, you'll have to make a decision to put something on the ballot in July.
Right.
At the end of July. So we're, we're looking at a very quick-moving process. I would imagine early July is when we're hoping to poll.
I was just trying to put it on the timeframe with the August.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, we've really got July, I keep telling people, it's not August, it's really July, because your council needs to make a decision, so we're really looking at July needing to have all this information.
Thank you.
Ms. Schneider?
I only heard when I got back from vacation last week that we have additional city properties, some of which could be sold. So the whole concept of selling City of Millbrae surplus property is brand-new to me, and I'm not sold on that.
No, I'm sorry.
But you've mentioned that potentially the sale of surplus property, which I'm assuming means those residential properties, not the commercial properties, that's brand-new to me. I'm not ready for that.
Okay, hold on, hold on one second. So, this is one funding aspect, and it will come back to the council, so you will be fully informed. We can't, you're not voting on that tonight.
I understand you, but, so, originally, I thought, fine, I'm okay with $40,000 to do the polling to get ready to when not this is gonna go on the November ballot. Sorry, public, I'm fighting a cold, so I'm a little stuffy. But now we're hearing that it's $30 million minus the insurance money that's left, minus the this, minus the that, including the potential sale. How can we go to a poll if we don't know what the $30 million and all the minuses are yet? How can you do that?
Well, that's what we're trying to finalize here, to get to that point in time. We don't wanna change any numbers that are presented to the public, we wanna get the, fine-tune the number that it's specific. This is one funding aspect that will come, again, before the council. It's actually parks for parks, it's not a residential property that we are valuing to bring down the price of this. It's a park for park, it's an unusal, unutilized park at this point in time, that hasn't been used. Schultz Park is one aspect of it, there's another small...
Yes, Schultz? We've also talked about Schultz Park as a potential swap for the community garden, and we're still waiting on the Parks Master Plan. So we're being asked to make a lot of decisions with a lot of balls still being juggled in the air. And on top of it, as I understand, we've got these design values that the architect is now gonna go back and bring us two concepts, and I have been adamant since day one that what we're gonna get is a modern building. And I'm very concerned. If we go out and poll people and they think they're gonna get this kind of building, and yet then they get that kind of building, isn't that, in a way, potentially misleading the public?
That is not at all our goal here.
Well, that's how I feel. I feel like it's misleading.
I'm sorry that you've been on vacation, because you've missed...
No, I checked email daily, I read everything that came in while I was gone.
Ms. Schneider, I'm not saying you didn't check email, that wasn't the purpose of that, but to see the community engaging in what the design elements were here and making the community center a reality that we can break ground next year, we are looking at all funding aspects here, and we're trying to be as transparent as possible to present that to the council. Yes, Ms. Aliva?
So, can I, can I ask, if I'm summing it up in my own head this way? We're trying to stay on a path where we're looking at the funding and the design all at the same time. And in order to stay on that same path, all of this is lumped together, we can give up to $40,000 on a polling, not a survey, but the survey shows that this is the direction of the architecture that we're going with.
No, it's more related to the funding.
The funding, the survey's just the funding. The...
Polling is just the funding, the survey is the design.
Okay, I think...
I think that's a good way to separate it in our head.
And it's, and we just wanna stay on the same, we just wanna stay on the same road, so that in July or August, we can have, make some final decisions. Simple?
You'll be hearing a lot about the community center in the next few meetings, we're still doing monthly updates to you, you know, as there's, we know that there's a lot we need to do in a short timeframe, and we're here to keep you all informed and appraised of what that is.
So by making a motion on what's on, in front of us, I would be saying, yes, keep moving it forward.
And the motion is all three items?
Yes, I made the motion.
And I encourage Group Four to please meet with Ms. Schneider and show her the various aspects that were presented to the public. I understand her concern, and we're not looking for an ultra-modern building by any means, way, shape, or form, and I appreciate the fact she brought up a more traditional aspect for the public to evaluate. So I'm eager to see what the architects come up with at this point in time, given these elements that the public has agreed upon. It's taking a community effort here. We understand the goal is really to restore this vital resource as quickly as possible and is with the greatest quality to the community. This is not going to be hodgepodge and not something that I hope people will object to. So I'm eager to see what architects can develop, given these aspects of what the public has approved. So if you could, hopefully, meet with Ms. Schneider and anyone else who has concerns about this, because we do want to have as much teamwork and unity as we progress down these lines. Yes, Ms. Schneider?
Is the sale of Schultz Park gonna be part of the polling information?
No, that's not, that's not within the polling context.
Then, and yet, we're trying to use potentially the offset of that to help bring down the price, to make the bond measure more palatable. So I guess I'm still having problems with this.
Okay.
I mean, I'm only one of three votes here tonight, but...
We want you to be comfortable here, and it's, I think Tom needs to explain that there are, there's certain parks for parks property, it's not just Schultz Park, so why don't you start the discussion here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is just the due diligence phase, that we're trying to look at, you know, knowing the probability of the payment capacity of the voters, which will be somewhere between $10 and $12 million, we need to come up with two-thirds additional funding. And so we know that one-third is coming from the development impact fees and the insurance money. The other third, we're looking at asset management, the sale of land that hasn't been utilized and that's underutilized, that we could actually gain some revenue to help offset the cost, and as been mentioned, parks for parks. So, being able to, and it's not just parks, we actually have two other parcels that are legal lots that would yield at least two single-family homes, possibly three. And so Schultz Park was identified by community members and committee members as a means to possibly raise some revenue, offset the cost of the taxpayers, and come up with, with two-thirds funding and go out to the voters for one-third funding. But we're just in the due diligence phase right now, so we will bring back the information to the council. There are always some legal issues with selling parks and public land that we have to go through that process, and so it's just, we're really looking at every aspect we can to, to come up with funding as, as a means to limit the cost back to, to the, to the community, back to the taxpayers.
Can you understand that, this is the first time I've heard that we're now looking at a $10 to $12 million bond measure as opposed to anything more? I guess I should be happy it's less money to the public, I understand the, the concepts, but that's a lot of money to cobble together to actually make the project happen. And granted, I was on two trips in May, but this is a surprise to me, this is landing on me right now.
Well, $30 million...
And that bothers me.
We've gotta come up with $30 million, and I think the best way to do that is to look at our underutilized assets, or at least that's what staff is, is looking at, and we'll bring it back to the city council. But we're, we are just in the due diligence phase, we're getting some assessed valuations of the property to see if it makes sense or not. But I, I would recommend that it is certainly worth looking at and, and using our asset management as a tool that will be sold to go back into the community. So we're not selling an asset, for example, to try to balance a, a general fund budget or something like that. So, you know, the community, the, the revenue from that asset will go to improve another asset.
And where are these properties?
There's a, there's, there's a, there's a parcel, just where, where Wright Field is at Mills High School, there, there's a single-family parcel, Schultz Park, as we had mentioned, and then there's...
Hold on, I'm writing it down, Wright Field?
And I, and Councilmember, I can, I can work with you and I can show you...
Well, I think the public should know where these properties are, because you're asking us to do a vote tonight, so that we can keep moving and that this potentially can be on the November ballot. But this is just getting sprung now, and I didn't read it in the staff report, did I miss it in the staff report?
So it's, that's not a decision before the council this evening. So again, we're looking at the due diligence on the financing aspects to, to raise enough revenue for the $30 million cost. So this, it's a little bit premature to, quite frankly, even have this discussion. We don't know what the value of the land is and the full feasibility. We do know that when it comes to selling public land, we have to offer it to other taxing entities first, so we, you know, it...
And the only thing we know tonight is that the price tag is $30 million. We know the design values that the public has expressed interest in, and we know that we are going to have to communicate with the public at a point in time very soon. So, the polling aspect is being placed into this agenda item.
And we need to think creatively, sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, no, no, and we are trying to be...
Think differently to, to actually make this happen. And, and my past experience, having asset management, utilizing and selling underutilized property is, is very much a, a good means to raise revenue, as long as the community knows it's going back into the community for a community benefit. But I think it's premature to have the discussion tonight, because we don't have the information, we don't know what the value is, we don't know what the full feasibility is. That, that's being studied by staff and not part of the, the decision this evening.
And I hope you will meet with Ms. Schneider.
Yes.
I'll vote on this, but I'm voting very hesitantly, I'd rather be voting no. I understand that you want all four or five of us to step forward together on this, but I'm really uncomfortable, really uncomfortable with how this happened tonight. But I'm ready to vote affirmatively for it.
Okay, and this is the trouble with the Brown Act. Again, these are preliminary discussions, so no property is being sold. We are looking at the most viable funding sources to make a new community center viable. So, Tom will meet with Ms. Schneider and look at one of the options. Again, this is just an option proposed here. I'm sorry for any discomfort any council member feels, that's not... I'll repeat again. I'm sorry for any discomfort that a certain council member feels at this point in time. We hope that we can proceed, the goal is for the community, and the goal is for a community center. We have tried to be as efficient moving forward as we can and as considerate of everyone within the community, and we're just working as hard as we can to make it a reality. Nothing specific has been determined, that was one aspect of making this a reality. So, Williams, please meet with Ms. Schneider after this meeting. We have a motion and we have a second. I would ask for the council's vote, and hopefully, we can proceed in a positive manner moving forward.
Item number eight passed with a vote of four to zero, with Vice Mayor Lee excused.
Okay, thank you, everyone, greatly appreciate it, and we look forward to the next proposal when this comes back to the council very soon. Okay, our next item, adoption of a budget, two-year operating capital budget.
Good evening, Mayor and council members again. We are, we spoke to you last month a little bit about the operating and capital budget, we're back with a final recommended...
I think you have to talk more into the microphone.
Oh, sorry about that. We're back tonight with the final recommended operating and capital budget. So, we'll go through how we got to where we are. So, give you a little bit of overview, some of it we talked about at our last meeting, and so we'll, I'll go through that very quickly, review the department budgets, what departments have adjusted to get us to a balanced operating budget. We're very pleased that we have, we've been, over the last several years, presenting operating budgets with a deficit, meaning that we need to dip into reserves to fund the budget. We have not needed to do that during the years, but we've, we've budgeted that way, and this year we're budgeting with no need of reserves for operating costs, only for capital improvement. So, and we'll conclude by talking again about recommended capital and special projects, a five-year plan, that, that is a funded five-year plan. So at our last meeting, we talked a little bit about some of the definitions and guiding principles. So again, we separate the operating and the capital budget. The operating budget is focused on the day-to-day needs, so assuming nothing changes, those are the, that's what we do to keep our current programs operating as they are today. The capital budget are those special and one-time projects, and for those projects, we use fund balance available, so those are funds exceeding our required reserve balance that are available to do these one-time projects. Again, we strive for a balanced budget, meaning that our revenues either exceed or meet, match our expenses. So again, for 2019, those are matched. And we have, and this is primarily focused on the general fund budget, most of the presentation, as that is a budget over which council has the most discretion. But we also will talk a little about enterprise funds and some of the special funds. You do all have a recommended budget book for the, in the presentation, we kind of highlighted the larger funds, we did not get into several of the smaller funds in this presentation, but if, if it's okay with the mayor, I'm happy to take questions as we go along, to answer any questions that you may have. I did get some questions earlier and, and hope that I've gotten them answered as we go through the presentation, but again, happy to take any additional questions. So again, our process, the departments all participate, and not just at the department head level, so I meet with members of the management team, even the administrative staff will get together to identify what they see on the horizon, what's been going on currently, for example, where we see that there's, could be room for budget savings, what, what might be the source of that, are there items that come late in the year that we need to expect? So we, we do a lot of detail work together as a team. We also look at funds that need transfers, so for example, the Recreation Fund, the Field License Agreement Fund, the Storm drain fund requires transfers from the general fund, so we need to assure that we have, again, enough general fund resources to support those funds' operations as well. We distribute costs where possible, so for example, pension costs or insurance costs, workers' compensation costs, those are distributed amongst the departments. And we look at where we can use restricted funds for, both for personnel or for special projects, so funds that are, that are brought in for a specific item, such as development fees that are brought in, where we can use those instead of using a general fund dollars that can be used more, more widely. Looking at all funds, our total budget, our revenue budget is, for 2019, is $75.1 million, and operating, or all funds expenses, and I'm sorry, this is all, including capital and operating, is $83.6 million. The bulk of the difference, again, relates to the capital program and the general fund, which is funded with excess fund balance over the required council-directed reserves. So in the general fund, the general fund revenue, as at, at this recommended budget book, is $30.6 million, it's a forecast. So we're projecting what, what revenues will come in, we'll watch them very closely to, to be sure we're going to hit those targets. That number, based on our discussion at the last council meeting, includes a transfer from capital funds to fund the engineering staff associated with capital projects. And then the operating expenses are that same number, $30.6 million. For 2020, we do still have a deficit, we'll talk later about some of our recommendations for how to bring that budget into balance for next year as well. Again, as noted, there's capital and special projects in the general fund, about $7.5 million for 2019, and Kealan will talk about many of those later, and in 2000, or 2020, about $6.7 million in capital and special projects. So the general fund revenue sources, the primary source of revenue is... So the general fund revenue sources, the primary source of revenue is property tax, followed by transient occupancy tax, and those two revenue sources are over 60% of city revenue. Sales tax is about another 10%. So sales and, and sales tax and TOT are very economically sensitive, so that is, that is always a concern that we are very mindful of. I know in the past, as it is experienced, for example, a single business could have a significant impact on the city's budget. So where we, we watch those very closely. We are seeing that TOT is a bit flat. In the last couple of years, it was growing very steadily and has, the rate of growth and may even be declining. So we're-
Is there any reason for that that we are aware of?
Not that we've identified at this point. So in the recommended TOT ordinance, one of the things that we'll be asking in terms of submittals is for the operators to submit their rooms available and rooms rented. TOT is based on revenue, so if, if the operator's charging less for their room, then, you know, that, and that may be because occupancy is lower. There may be just more options for, for people in the area. We've talked about short-term rentals, and that may help to bring that number back up if that's creating more options, causing hotels to have to reduce their rates. And at the moment, we're not bringing in revenue from other short-term rentals. So there, we have not yet identified that, but certainly we'll be looking at that. 2020 is pretty similar in terms of a revenue perspective. So again, about 60, over 60% in property and TOT tax. The primary difference between those two years, 2020 is projected to be a little bit lower in revenue, and that is there's less funding from grants during that period, but we may still get more funding from grants. So, so for now, we're projecting a year out. We're making estimates based on what we know today. We don't just stop trying to gain more revenue and reduce our expenses, but this is what we have today in terms of a production.
And if I may real quick, with the development impact fee program that, you know, the council has, has directed us to fast-track, then, you know, that will also change our, our revenue picture going into 2020, in the, in the second fiscal year of this budget cycle. So keep that in mind.
Yeah, that's accounted for in our next steps, yes.
And the Airbnb TOT, or the short-term rental TOT, that would come with an expense as well, because we have to hire somebody to follow that. So it'll, it'll, it'll generate the money, but it also, I'm not so sure that that will bring us up to where we need to be from the last few years, is my point.
So we built into the budget the code enforcement. We can talk about that later as well, but we did build in a full-time code enforcement from a half-time, anticipating that some of that work would be associated with TOT. Typical agreements to have outsourced vendors help us identify short-term rentals is kind of a revenue sharing. So we get some revenue, they get some revenue, and then theirs goes away, and we get all of the revenue. So I think, in general, we'll, we'll increase revenue as we go into that, but there is some time in terms of going through this process of developing and getting ordinance approved, but I know it's definitely moving. So just a little bit of a reminder of property tax dollars. A city receives about 1%, I mean, I'm sorry, 17%, I'm thinking of sales tax. City receives about 15% of property tax dollars. In addition, the city also receives the fire, the fire supplemental tax, and the county also collects a storm drain assessment on behalf of the city, as well as the library bonds. Those funds are collected and used directly to pay bond expenses. So there was a question about the amount of fire tax that is collected, the special assessment, and that is about $1.5 million a year. It is collected into the general fund, as that is where fire expenses are paid, and fire expenses well exceed that number, so there's not many need for particular accounting or transactions to, but it's certainly easy to find. We do track it separately from other property tax revenue. Again, the other two major sources of revenue are transient occupancy tax, yes?
I'm sorry, when you're done with sales tax, I have a sales tax question.
Okay, happy to help. So this is where the city receives 1%. So city receives 1%. It's called Bradley Burn sales tax revenue. So of the 8.25% collected at the, at the city, the city receives 1%. And then the other, we also receive components of, so we receive a little bit of public safety sales tax based on a formula. We receive some Measure M and some Measure A, some that are used for transportation projects.
Ms. Schneider?
So it all depends on how you wanted to go through all the documents, but I'm on the, the budget book, page 19 and page 6. And my question was, how are we handling sales tax leakage? That's question number one. And question number two is, we're growing, it seems to me that we are growing the number of cash-only businesses, especially if you walk down Broadway or portions of El Camino. And how are we ensuring that we're collecting 100% of the sales tax that those businesses should be paying? So one is on sales tax leakage. The other is another form of sales tax leakage, but not technically called that.
So I was very happy that our new project manager of economic development and housing asked the same questions, so we'll be looking at that as we go through some of our planning projects and the major plans. And so leakage, as, and I want to be sure we're on the same definition, to me is where our residents could be spending money elsewhere because they don't have a place here to buy those, those things. Is that your definition?
That's my understanding of sales tax leakage, yes. How do we capture them back? Have we identified the businesses we need here to encourage our people to shop local? Local Millbury?
So we have both leakage and we have, we get money from other cities. So our, for example, our restaurants and food products is well above, based on, they kind of do a per capita spending, what our, what our community could spend. So we, we go both ways. So retail's an area where we have leakage, and food products is an area where we, we bring in more than, than the calculation would identify. But we, we then look at, at that from an economic development perspective. So the new project manager in economic development would be looking at that to identify, you know, if there's areas that maybe we should be looking to bring businesses in. You know, of course, we have a lot of development going on. So that, that is an economic development stuff that we'll be taking as we move forward. And related to whether businesses pay their sales tax, there's, there's two components to that. So the first is that we assure that tax is remitted properly. So sometimes, for example, a business may inadvertently send their, their sales tax under a different coding, and so it could go to another city. And we use a consulting, consulting service who validates that and brings that revenue back to the city, and we get, we periodically are notified of those changes. The other is if the business is not collecting sales tax, and there was a recent audit, we have not gotten the results of it, but the state did come in on their own and do an audit of businesses. So they'll do kind of a spot audit to, to see if there are businesses not collecting and remitting sales tax.
Is that the state study when it comes out? Is that something that would come back to council or just be part of our bi-weekly update?
I can follow up, but certainly we would, we could just provide the data that they give to us. I have not seen any end results. I don't know what the timeline is, but I can inquire of our-
And if it seems to be a large number, will we be able to implement a plan to recover those?
Yeah, they would, they would take that action. The state would take that action, and it would be recovered to us.
Great, thank you.
I'm curious on the property tax aspect of it. Certain home improvements are done these days because it's such an investment to have a piece of property in Millbury. So are we, I know for those people who do get a permit, it then goes through the county. Are we then getting an update from the county as far as the fees are increased footage in home ownership? And are you seeing a significant percentage in remodels and-
Appraised value?
Appraised value, yeah.
Yeah, we, we see a steady growth. We are definitely not hitting the numbers at other local agencies that are doing a lot more construction, but we, we've had a steady growth of at least 5% over the last several years. I did do a backtrack to see where we've been at. So of course, we had those years when the, when buildings were built along El Camino, and those were a greater increase in tax revenue. But there is an ongoing growth, and considering there's not, you know, lots to rebuild on, that's either property turnover. So when a property is sold, then of course, it's reassessed, and, and then also improvements. So looking at, at our general fund operating expenses, about 56% is in our public safety costs. That includes our contracts with our partner agencies, with San Mateo County Sheriff and with Central County Fire, as well as associated costs. So for example, we still have pension liabilities and retiring medical liabilities for the police and fire employees that did work for us, and those are included in those budgets just for tracking purposes. So, and there is one employee of the police department that works for the city.
Can you please identify for me, not at this moment in time, what the pension obligation is for city council members at a future meeting?
I can tell you now if you'd like.
Oh, you can tell me now, okay.
So the city pays what's called a normal pension cost, which is a percentage each year. It's about, it's about 7%. Employees pay 5%. I think council is treated the same. And then there's a UAL, so we allocate that based on the pension costs, to share it amongst any department with staff. So the city's normal cost in the council member budget is about $1,000. The UAL cost is about $800. And then we also allocate the cost of our pension obligation bond from 2004, and that's about $2,500. And then other post-employment retiring medical is another $800. And these are just allocations all based off what the purse costs are. Does that help you with your question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure it out here. State legislators no longer get a pension. Council members are part-time, and I know two of the three council members here don't take a pension. So I was just trying to see what savings, if we were to go down that path, would entail.
So we would still have obligations for those that were in the system, similar to what we have for police and fire. So some of, for example, the, some of the post-employee retiring medical is for council members that aren't on council any longer. So, you know, some of it would-
Is that, is that automatic vestating, or is there a, a period of, you have to vest before that happens?
So that program, I assume it was the same for councils for employees. I'd have to research that a little bit more, but the retiring medical for employees ended in 2013, and I assume the same would have been for council, but it might have been treated differently. I have to do more research on that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Schneider?
Again, on pension, and I'm looking forward to our pension briefing when we get a chance to catch our breath. I had thought I heard, and definitely correct me, that part of our pension problem now is that we have so reduced our number of regular employees, so our contribution to the pension is less, making our pension liability percentage-wise greater? Or am I just getting those confused? The question, I guess the outcome would be, is, if we add, we're going to talk tonight about adding some employees and then changing some job descriptions around. As we add a full-time code enforcement, as we add potentially park maintenance people, what is that doing to our pension liabilities?
The reality is, it would, it would increase the pension liabilities.
But does it have more bodies covering in?
Well, as a, as a percentage of, of salaries. So when we've contracted services out, our salaries go down. So yes, adding more salaries would make the percentage go down, but it makes the cost go up. So what you want is your costs to be low. You know, the percentage is, is a number that you could, you know, you can modify in a number of ways, but it doesn't, what you want is, is lower costs.
Although the new employees are getting less of a pension than the older employees.
That is correct.
So is that, is that where some balancing comes out?
Yeah, there's certainly a sweet spot, so to speak, in there somewhere. We just haven't analyzed as, as to what that is.
It doesn't stop me wanting to hire staff. I mean, we can't, we can't have trees dying in the middle of El Camino. You know, we just can't have that. But I'm really looking forward to that pension discussion.
We will be doing that shortly.
Did you have a question, Mr. Holliver? Okay.
I think one other thing worth answering as it relates to pension and just salaries in general, so we, you know, we implemented a new financial system last year. This was the first year we used it for budget, and it was fantastic. Our team was able to, so last year, we just kind of had to allocate as though everybody had everything, and this year, we, we've tied everything to the actual person and what they're receiving in benefits. And so it was a much, it really helped us get the budget numbers right and bring them down. And, and the team did a really great job of bringing that new system in and making it work. So that, you'll see in your council budget, if you look at your budget book, a pretty significant decrease in salary and benefits costs, and that was really associated with that use of the system to better target the costs. So just to refresher, we, we talked about in the last several years, 2016, 17, and 18, the budget has included an operating deficit, meaning that our expenses exceeded our revenues. That was, that was what the budget was, but we identified that there were, there were other savings within that budget. So at the end of the year, we didn't necessarily spend that full budget. Again, for this year, we are at a balanced budget, same revenues as expenses, but for next year, for 2020, we'll be coming back to throughout the year to try to bring that down to zero from a $2.3 million deficit.
I'm slightly unclear here. Are we getting Measure M money? I saw in one place we were not, yet it's still measure, or it's still in here.
Yes, we, we received Measure M and Measure A.
Okay, I knew, I saw Measure A, but somehow I thought Measure M was a zero.
Is that in county?
Yeah, they're both county, I think, or one's state and one's county, but-
Yeah, one is NPDES.
And is storm, storm, county.
On page 45 of the budget, but-
Is that where it was? Okay.
So yeah, Measure, Measure A is, is about $575,000 in anticipated revenues to be used, to be directed at streets projects. And Measure M is about $100,000, and it is focused on the city street sweeping program at this time. I'm sorry.
That's on page 45? I see $100,000 on 45.
Yeah, I'm not seeing Measure M.
The top of 45, it just cuts the page, so the bottom of 45-
Bottom of 44, and it goes to, to a table on the top of page 45.
This is part of our NPDES?
This is the money I think you received through C-KAG. These are vehicle license fees.
Right, but they're going to help us maintain our NP, our non-point source pollution permit by keeping the litter out of the storm drains?
Yes, that's correct. Street sweeping is part of NPDES. So again, in addition to dealing with the operating deficit we started with, we also had some increases in our, in our operating budget. So primarily pension, we talked about that already. So about $540,000 for former public safety employees, police and fire, $100,000 for miscellaneous employees. This is just the general fund. Citywide, the unfunded actuarial liability, that's the big number for, that's not paid partially by employees, is $3.6 million in all funds and $2.8 million in the general fund. So that is our current unfunded annual payment toward our unfunded liability. There's a, there's a very large liability that we're bringing that towards. We also saw increases in our public safety contracts. So police services had an increase of $150,000, and the fire services increase was about $520,000. That was really targeted, again, off of their increase in pension costs that they experienced. And as a follow-up to the last meeting, there was an effort to schedule a fire subcommittee meeting. We were not able to get that scheduled in advance of tonight's meeting due to some scheduling conflicts, but we are still working to get that scheduled before the end of the, the month.
Yes, Ms. Schneider?
So again, in the budget book, on page 50, it lists projects that the, the police department has completed, and then some 2019 projects, but I don't see anything here listed about homeless issues, and I don't see anything in both police or fire to help me understand what happens when we, we do mutual aid work, which we did, which our services did and thank you for. But do we get that money back from FEMA, or does it go back to Central County? Either way, it didn't get discussed under either police or sheriff here, and I just wanted to know how all that worked.
I'll let Shave respond to that, thank you.
I can give you the quick, quick version of that. There's really two forms of it. There's a federal component and a state component, depending on what we do. We had two out-of-state responses at FEMA requests.
Houston?
So that is, one was to Houston and one was to Florida. Those are fully funded, 100% recovery for all of our costs, including backfill. recovery for all of our costs, including backfill. When we go to in-state responses, we get state reimbursement for that, for full cost reimbursement on that. Well, not including backfill, but for transportation costs, for wear and tear on vehicles as well. So, we get FEMA, we actually get a little bit more to cover the buffer costs on the other end. For state, we do pretty much everything that we put out of pocket, if that helps.
Is it typical in a budget book to talk about the FEMA input for that? It is a source of funds, I suppose, although it's pretty much a pass-through, isn't it?
In our, in our budget, in the CCFD budget book, it is included in there. Because of the way the reimbursement works, we don't always get it in that fiscal year. So, like, we're still waiting for some FEMA funds that we probably will not receive by July 1 for this past fiscal year.
Okay.
So, hopefully that helps.
Well, I look forward to having that fire subcommittee, so we can talk about that. The other question was, and we talked about it on goal setting, was, and not so much your department, although it could be, because of, for example, the homeless population in the old lumberyard that could be lighting fires. I thought we had talked about looking into some homeless work, or looking into services with the homeless population in our 2018, 19 goals, and I didn't see that reflected in the budget book.
I, I don't think that came out as one of the top goals here, but as far as budgetary spending, I don't believe that the council approved any funding in that area. There were certain discussions, as Mr. Muzi mentioned, related to property, but we don't have any current funding related to the homeless issue. We count on the sheriff's department for outreach and community services at the county level.
Would that count, then, as the first bullet point on page 51, when it says, "Continue to focus on reduction of crime and improving quality of life"? It's just not the PC way to say that.
Well, again...
If I may, Mayor?
We've got it.
As the city attorney just brought up, if you looked at the governor's budget in the city of California, there was a tremendous allocation into homeless. So, we will kind of wait and see how the, how the state allocates that money back to the local level.
Okay.
So, I do think there's probably some...
So, it is a potential source of revenue?
Right.
Okay. I just don't want to lose it, and it wasn't in any of the documents. Okay, thank you.
The cities actually drew more money out of the governor than what he, he wanted. So, good job, all the cities out there, so.
Okay, again, it's not in the budget, so it's, it's what is in the budget right now.
And I, I do want to say, I do believe the, the police department or sheriff's office does do some as part of their ongoing operations, some of that outreach type of activity, but we can bring that back at a later time if, if that's the desire.
Maybe with a nice big check from the state.
All right. So, just a quick note, you'll note that the, what we're saying, our increases are greater than what the total is of 900,000. The increases are 1.3 million. You'll see a number of reductions as we go through the departments that offset that increase. And again, we, we ended up balancing at the end.
So, to be clear, we've had numerous increased costs, including a expenditure of 1.88 million by the majority of this council. That impacted, has that been taken on the books at this point?
That is in our capital budget, yes.
So...
So, we, what we did was we reduced the funding available for capital projects by that amount.
So, the 1.88...
2.88.
2.88, that the majority of the council added to the BART project.
We'll see that when we talk about capital.
We've taken away from capital projects. Okay, I just want to be clear.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Has the corresponding 2.88 million contribution from the developer been included in the budget?
Yeah, so it's, it's not incorporated into budget at this time because of the timing of the anticipated payment, but it is part of what we discussed earlier under the community center item, a part of the funding package.
Okay.
So, when we talk about having $9 million, six of that is insurance settlement, about three of that is this funding from the, from the developer.
Correct. But you mentioned that the 2.88 city contribution to the development would be in the 18, 19 budget?
It's, it's not in a budget, but it's basically what we...
It's just a set aside, basically.
Accounting term for it is called committed. So, we've committed that to somebody. We've made an agreement to, to pay those funds. So, we have to set them aside so they don't get used on something else.
But not until the project is complete.
Correct. So, it doesn't mean we spend them. We just hold them and, and tell the timing that we're required to pay them.
And we had to take them away from capital improvements.
Yeah. So, it's basically an accounting treatment that we do so that we assure that the funds are available when we're supposed to pay them, because we made a commitment as the city to do that.
Thank you.
So, when we reported last month, we reported the department's first budget, first blush of department request of budget. We had a deficit of about 3 million. The time we came to you, we were down to about 2 million. We were going to go back and take some more actions and, and get it into balance, and that's what we did. So, we reduced the deficit. We took several actions. One was, we were able to revisit our revenue projections. So, our sales tax consultant had given us some updated numbers. They're still relatively conservative, but we, you know, as we've had more time, for example, with the new retail location in the city, we're able to look at new numbers. There was another, also another large sales tax payer that's recently joined the city. We, as we discussed, we transferred expenses for staff associated to capital projects into the capital projects. This, again, does result in a reduction of funds directly to capital projects, but that is the purpose of those staff, so it does make sense. But you'll see that again in the capital budget. We unfunded some vacant positions. One was a requested new position, and one was an existing position that had not been filled. We don't expect either those to result in any loss of service level for the city. And we, we really looked at our contract costs. So, in, in departments where staff has been added, we evaluated whether the contract cost was, was still necessary, and really dug into those numbers, and that brought us another $500,000 in savings. And we also identified that in the storm drain fund, there is enough fund balance that we can not do an operating transfer this year. We can, and that will, that will save $400,000 from the general fund. So, there's funds already available from prior years. So, those, those were the primary actions.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Dan, I, I think we're on page 14 of the budget book, where you were talking about position increases or the ones that we don't want to fill. And I had called Angela earlier today when I went through the Public Works budget item, which is page three of three of Attachment 2. And I'm looking at, and I may have missed others in here, but these two were the two that, that showed Environmental Programs Manager and Environmental Programs Coordinator. We've got them budgeted in the current year, and then they completely zero out for all remaining budget years. And I thought, well, maybe that's because they've moved from Public Works to Administration, but I didn't see them picked up in Administration. So, I don't want to lose those two staff people.
So, those positions are not lost. They were re-titled to Special Programs Manager and Special Programs Coordinator, and the basis was to work on other sustainability programs. As we, again, looked at the budget, at that time, the plan was to do some general type of activities, but we did not change the activities because we did not fund them out of the general fund. So, they will be doing still the same focus on water conservation and solid waste management. But they, they still are in the budget and...
So, they did get moved. I just, it wasn't clear to me in reading the documents, they just disappeared into a job title. Maybe you want to footnote that?
So, that happened, actually, with the 17, 18 amended budget, and that's why it wasn't highlighted. So, when we brought that budget back...
Really, I forgot about that.
Yeah. So, that's, that's why I didn't highlight it again this time. So, it disappeared.
I'd still like to see a footnote. Someday, we may not want them as special projects. We may want them back as sustainability or, or environment. My one concern, when you make them special projects, they could be off doing, putting up flagpoles. You know, I don't know. When you get to have environmental staff, usually you want to hang on to your environmental staff. You don't get a lot of them.
So, we focus them based on their funding in the water conservation and in the solid waste programs, and that means 100%.
But as we come forward with the Climate Action Plan, whether it falls under Public Works or falls under Special Projects, or every department takes on an aspect of resilience planning, I just don't want to lose them. Thanks.
That is not the intention at all.
Then I had one other question. Under the city manager one, it just, when I looked at these, it just looked like we were getting a little bit management top-heavy, but I could be wrong. We have two deputy city managers. We have an assistant city manager and a city manager. We're 23,000 people. Is it typical to have that many city manager positions open? And my second question is another area. We gave $200,000 to the Boys and Girls Club, and yet we're eliminating three part-time recreation staff. So, I don't understand what's going on, and maybe that will become clear when the parks management plan, which that's parks, though, not recreation. I just, it seems like we're still outsourcing recreation and not having the staff to do some of the projects that a city traditionally does under recreation.
So, to address the first point first, the assistant city manager position was removed in 2017, I believe, replaced with two deputies. Then, one deputy replaced the finance director position. So, the finance director position was eliminated, replaced with a deputy city manager slash finance director. In this budget, the second deputy is, is, is replacing the deputy, or the deputy, I'm sorry, the public works director. So, we've actually kind of maintained the same number of management positions, and we'll, I'll bring up an organization chart. I think that'll help a lot. To the second question, in the staff report and later in this presentation, we are looking for some policy direction. Recreation, and they did a fantastic job. They really looked under every corner, and, and they, what they did was they looked at their actual spend on part-time staff. So, in 2017, we increased some part-time staff in recreation to full-time staff. And so, they're doing some things that we used to use part-time temporary staff to do. And so, when we looked at their actual expenses on part-time staff into their programs, we found that by reducing the staff, there again is no reduction in services. We, we would like to, for an ongoing basis, and we'll talk about it under policy direction, revisit that, that grant, because that is funding that might be able to be used, again, bringing back staff to do other programs that they, you know, they would really like to continue to look at expanding programs, which they're doing on an ongoing basis anyway. They're looking at revenue recovery and that type of thing, but that is a policy decision that we'll want to talk about.
Given that the budget book is a two-year budget book, and you've got great institutional memory, but it's not in writing, how do we maintain that institutional memory? Can we modify the budget book to add a little bit more detail to explain a little bit of the history?
In terms of the Boys and Girls Club?
What you've just said about any of the kind of shifting from here to there. I've been here two and a half years now, so I remember some of the shifting, but who knows two years from now, when we're looking at this again, who's going to remember back to now?
So, some of that is why in your position control, you've got the, the first adopted budget, 16, 17, 17, 18, which was a two-year budget. Then, you've got the final 2016, 17 budget, which is when we did quite a bit of position adjustment. So, it follows across, but certainly if, I mean, and, and even the budget book is a bit of a work in progress. What we had before, when I arrived, was not detailed to the department level, so we, we really tried to improve that. So, certainly, we can look to add more detail where it's needed. But again, you're right, it is a two-year budget process. So, some of it, we keep, for example, this position control is available back to 2008, and every so often, somebody will come and say, "Well, we used to have a something." And we'll be able to look back and say, "Yeah, and then it was replaced with this," or "This happened," or so.
I, I think what we would like to see in general, and it's been an issue as far as institutional memory goes, is record-keeping and some standards for record-keeping when things happen so that you can go back, or someone needs to go back, they can access that information. It's been problematic at all different levels. So, I've mentioned it to Mr. Williams here, but moving forward, we should sustain record-keeping, especially when it comes to budget items, particularly when it comes to property items. That seems to fall through the cracks. So, that is a consideration I really think we need to invest in. A prime example, TOD at the BART station and that one, what is it, Aviator, whatever, everybody thinking they could use a street when, in fact, the residents were promised that that street was going to be blocked off and maintained. So, there, there are really aspects that we need to focus on. Mr. Hollibur?
Well, the Boys and Girls Club, I think, is a great point, because my recollection, you know, it's a, it's a wonderful program. I'm glad that we have it in Millbrae, and I certainly don't want to lose it. It was my recollection when that first came, you know, when we first started to work with them, is that it wasn't going to be the city contributing to, you know, at least not the full amount for the long term. It was really like a pilot-type of program, and what we were told is, "Oh, yeah, we're going to look for more funding at some point," or "Another source of funding so the city isn't paying for the full amount." And, you know, I certainly don't want to lose that program, and a lot of work went in, mostly volunteer labor, to get that building back up to code. But if that's something we can look into, into, I don't know if there's grants out there that can help provide operating costs for, for that program, but some other sources of revenue besides the city being the primary sponsor of that program.
So, certainly, if that's, that's the direction of council, and I, I have this on a later slide, we, we can start to talk with them and, and understand what their future picture is. Last year, council approved basically a $200,000 per year grant that renews every year, but we, we certainly can look to get some more information from them and consider amending that, if, if that's the desire of council to look at that.
Okay. Yeah, particularly the grant language, so for clarification, just historically speaking.
What's the direction? We're going to look at the...
Well, if that is, in fact, the case, that we've done a grant and we've agreed to continue it, I think Mr. Hollibur would like clarification on that as it relates, so...
We'd like clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
So, what we have is a grant agreement. It does allow for termination, and, and, you know, within that, there's certainly opportunities to renegotiate or amend it. We can bring some options back. I think first step for us is to talk with them, understand better, you know, what, what their longer-term plan is, and, and see what options we might be able to bring back to.
Well, and I think also we should include in that is the service group, because I'm pretty sure their numbers have been growing significantly. So, just, just to be aware, this is not something we're going to hold the budget up on. I would like to know what our reserve amount is at this point in time. I didn't see that in any of the documents. How much do we have in reserves?
So, right now, we have a fund balance in the general fund, which is what's left over after, at the end of the year, of about $24 million. I'm afraid I'm going to do it from memory, so I might need to fast-forward a bit. So, we, our reserve policy is to maintain 15% of that. So, we, we allocated, and I will talk about this in more detail when we get to the capital program, but our, so that requires that we maintain 4.5 million. And then, we've allocated 2.88 to the housing project. And for now, staff is a...
Reserves, the 2.?
Not out of the 4.5, but out of what's left between the 24 million and the 4.5. So, 19.5, and then you take 2.88 out of that. And then, we're recommending to hold 2.2 until we resolve this operating deficit. That left us 14 million for capital projects. And I did, we, we will go into this in a little bit as we get to capital.
All right, why don't you continue?
Sorry, what's the reserve balance at the end of 18, 19?
This is as of June 30, 17, because we have not yet closed the books for 18.
But the projected reserve balance at the end of this budget?
Well, we use the, the balance at the end of 17 as that's a set of closed books.
Okay.
We expect it to be similar. I've taken a look, and we don't expect large drawdowns or any drawdowns based on where we're at in terms of projects that we initiated or have not yet initiated. So, I expect it to kind of stay at about the same level, but we won't know again until we close the books, which is around the November, December timeframe.
Okay. And then for 18, 19, assuming that's a balanced budget without an operating deficit, it would not dip into reserves?
Correct. Well, it will dip for the capital.
For the capital, but there would still be...
But that will not dip your 4.5 million. We've set that aside based on your policy.
Okay, okay.
It would dip your 24 million.
Thank you.
That would be the policy I signed.
Yes, I did find it. Thank you.
Moving right along there. I do have a question, and I'm not sure it says to the resolution, so why don't you go ahead with your proposal or...
Okay. So, we just, we were just going to walk through the department budgets a bit. I don't know if you want to go into this level of detail, but we started with the non-departmental. That's kind of the, kind of the catch-all budget for those things that departments share, utilities, copy costs, things like that. That, that, that's also where transfers come out of. So, transfers to recreation, field license, storm drain, those come out of that budget. So, that budget has a decrease of about $2 million from 18 to 19, and that is because in 2018, we did a kind of cleanup of the vehicle and equipment replacement fund, resulting in a pretty large transfer. And also, we reduced transfer to the storm drain fund in 19 because of the fund balance, as we mentioned earlier. Oh, this should have been earlier. This is the org chart we were talking about before. To help you, I apologize, it got out of order. But again, we have... But, again, we have the Deputy City Manager of Public Works, Deputy City Manager over Finance and Recreation, and the other departments as we had before. So, those changes did not end up adding a layer of bureaucracy, we just did a little bit of duties shifting, so you'll see sustainability programs under Administrative Services, you see Recreation under Finance and Recreation, I don't, I don't want, they're, we're just both, so it's not one or the other.
Okay, that's not in our packet, could we get copies of that?
Yes, that'll get sent out. So, sorry about that. Moving on, City Council and City Attorney, I just combined those budgets, so there's a decrease of $100,000 in that budget. The, again, the primary reason, we talked about earlier, when we were able to use the new system to develop benefit costs, there were a lot of costs reduced in the council budget. Also, as we've refined our posting, so departments each have city attorney costs within their department, so we're better able to understand the costs of each function, and so that reduces kind of the city-wide, the city-wide generic city attorney costs. So, we, again, avoids kind of that double budgeting of funds. I did note, across all funds, so within that city attorney budget, it's about a $250,000 budget, but a city-wide, it's about a half million. And the different funds and different departments each have their own small budgets. City Manager and Administrative Services budget, that budget also has a decline of about a quarter million dollars. Again, transition of the budget of the Deputy City Manager, replacing the Public Works Director position, and a half-time Human Resources Technician was removed from the budget. There was an increase in budget for contract services, as things have been reallocated from other departments. There's, these are some primarily, like, for example, some Human Resources Services or Website Services, those type of specialty services that are used again city-wide, and managed by either the Clerk, Administrative Services, or the City Manager. Finance Department has a budget decrease of about $50,000. There was a limited-term Accounting Technician position that was put in the budget to assist through the financial system or ERP system conversion. That is still ongoing and focused primarily on the utility billing system at this time for the Finance Department and the Community Development Department, but that, we do have a little bit of increase in contract services to fund temporary services to help us support our front counter, as our staff is focused on the new system. Recreation had a decrease, again, of a quarter million dollars. We looked at, we decreased the revenue of the budget as they transitioned from the, and we had one budget in between, but it wasn't as clean as we would have hoped. So, we really refined the revenue numbers based on their actuals and what they're experiencing. Their hope is to continue to grow those revenues as they're in their new facility, but we needed to be conservative to give them the right funding they need to provide their services. As we mentioned before, we removed three full-time equivalent part-time positions, so it can be any number of employees working from eight hours of pay period to 20 type of thing. But we looked, again, at actual utilization, we did not decline services or reduce services, and also looked at needs. So, we knew what programs were doing, they really dug in and looked at what their programs really needed, what their full-time staff were doing, what they needed others to come in and do. Yes.
So, Deanna, I know you and I talked about, it was a tiny grant, it was an opportunity through the County Arts Commission to get at max a $7,500 grant, in a way hardly worth staff time to write something like that. But at that point in time, which was just a couple of months ago, we didn't have the staff flexibility to be able to write that. At Cultural Arts yesterday, staff was there, and as we were talking about the cultural arts program that the city could have, staff was able to pull up some amazing potential grant programs. My concern is that we've made the Recreation staff so thin that we don't have the resources to be able to apply for those grants. So, in this budget, with this staffing level, can we apply for those grants? Because the one grant that McKenzie found last night was big money.
So, we, you know, we do look at utilization with full-time and part-time staff, and we'll be looking at work plans for all the committees and commissions, and, you know, an important component of that is staffing, what those programs are. Those part-time staff would not be the ones who would be doing grant writing, and I, you know, I think we'll have to look at it when we look at the work plans, and certainly, if that causes adjustments to be needed, and there's funding available, we'll have to look at it. But we, but we're looking at it from the step one of developing, developing as part of your council goals, tangible work programs that you'll all be able to complete, and we'll have an understanding of funding and staffing needed to make it happen.
Okay, thank you.
Again, they also had a small reduction, last year, council approved funding for a vehicle that they're using. They all, they actually instead took a used vehicle from the Public Works yard, so it reduced, actually reduced that capital need as well. So, they just really did a fantastic job of looking at all their numbers and opportunities. Community Development, a decrease in budget was about $1 million. Most of this decrease is in changes to capital programs, so capital projects have been re-identified, and some are already funded into this year's budget. There was a little bit of reduction in contract services as they brought in new staff during this year, but, and we did propose the increase of a half-time Code Enforcement Officer to full-time. So, there are no proposed reductions in staffing in Community Development, this is, again, mostly related to their capital programs, and we'll look at those as we get to the capital Public Works has an increase in budget of about 1.3, again, significantly tied to capital programs, especially streets programs, and so engineering costs were related to capital programs. What we do is, we take the costs of capital programs requiring engineering services, allocate the cost of those staff among those programs, so they might be in Sewer Fund, Water Fund, General Fund, we allocate those costs, and so that caused an increase in costs for them. They had some increase in some contract service areas related, especially in streets maintenance, to be sure they have the ability to bring in a contractor for quick projects, mostly electrical, some asphalt projects, that type of thing, that need to be done quickly. And, again, increase in their capital and special projects budget, which we'll review in totality. And that's the Public Works General Fund budget, we'll be stepping through, again, some of the funds, some of the tiny funds, we won't go through, but if you have questions from the budget book, happy to answer them. The Field License Agreement has a small increase, requiring an increased transfer from the General Fund of about $45,000. This was a little bit of change in accounting treatment, so, for example, the, that license agreement, we pay, we pay rent from the Redevelopment Agency to the schools, they pay us money back, but it was, we were transmitting it through this fund, and it's not under the successor agency identification, it's not necessary to take that extra transaction. So, there is a small increase in this budget, they're doing, for example, turf work on the fields and regular activities at the fields, and we also, during the 2018 update, reallocated some staff to better understand the time being spent doing that program. Sanitation, we have an increase in revenue of about $1.3 million, increase in expenses of about a half million dollars. That difference will be held in reserves and used for the capital program. So, as we do the wastewater rate studies or the water rate studies, they anticipate kind of an ebb and flow of capital projects. So, there are some years where revenues exceed expenses, then you'll have a follow-up year, and you'll see that actually in 2020, where expenses exceed revenues because we're doing more capital at that time. So, in the 2020 budget, you'll see quite a bit of treatment plant projects, the sewer collection projects are in the Sewer Modernization Program Fund. That budget revenue is about $3.1 million, the expenses are going to be about $1.2 million increase from the prior year, and, again, the difference held in reserves to fund the future programs for that fund. That does include using some of the debt proceeds that were issued this year, we issued a $19 million bond, so that's, that's some of that increase in revenue. The Water Utility, absolutely stabilizing, increase in revenue of about $4.3 million, increase in expenses a half million dollars. We are starting design for water tank project and water main replacements. We want to meet the, so the reserve policy had a level of 15% for the General Fund and 10% for other funds, so we want to be sure we're hitting that targeted policy level, and also to have sufficient funds in reserve when we go out for debt financing to look at water tanks. So, we are monitoring that and hoping to get a water main project out in 2020 as well. Storm Drain has a decrease in budget, again, a decrease in transfer from the General Fund because we have some funds available in that fund, reducing the need for transfer. Police budget is increasing about $240,000, $150 is the contract cost, the remainder is increase in post-employment pension and OPEB costs. Fire budget increasing about $875,000, I think $750 was the contract cost, and the remainder pension and other benefit costs. So, some of the next steps that we're looking at, we talked about this a little bit earlier, we're looking at interim fee schedule update, recovering costs of some programs, looking at Recreation and Community Development in particular, we'll be looking at then a larger master fee study that we hope to get an RFP released very quickly, we'll be looking at other options to reduce that structural imbalance for next year, and as we, as new programs are put in place, we'll be looking at, again, whether we want to fund ongoing programs, fund more capital, or, again, if we're just able to get that operating deficit down for next year. And we'll be talking with you throughout the year as we, as these programs come up. So, now, we'll be getting into the capital plan, we've, again, talked a little bit about this. When we did the prior capital budgets, we didn't get into what funds were available, we just kind of showed you what was needed. So, we wanted to really dig in and make sure it was understood, so you had the options to, you know, consider other priorities or shift things around. We used a zero-based budget, so that we had a starting point. So, if a project is not encumbered by a contract or purchase order, by the, by, it's either re-included in a new plan that starts at zero, or it's removed, and we've indicated that in notes in the document that was presented as part of the budget book. Our considerations, the basis for the recommended capital plan is the strategic goals that you worked out on May 5th, completion of previous initiatives, so if we started something, we wanted to make sure we got it finished, we wanted to continue to assure the health and safety of our citizens, meet federal and state mandates, and long-term sustainability. So, we talked about this calculation a little bit earlier, we closed out June 30 of 2017 with 24 million, we don't expect to dip into that for 2018, so that was our starting point. We held back 4.5 million as our reserve policy, we addressed other committed funds, including 2.88 million for the Affordable Housing Project and 2.2 million until we resolved that deficit in 2020. So, the fund balance available was 14 million, that's what we're left with. And so, Key's going to come talk with you about some of the Public Works capital, and I'll come back and wrap up.
Good evening, Mayor Papen, Member of the City Council. I am Key Lim, Deputy City Manager, Public Works Director. Tonight, I'm going to be walking you through some of the capital projects that we have planned for the next two years. So, the most important part, the streets. So, we're allocating quite a lot of money next, to fiscal year, to streets. Currently, we have one package coming to you in July, a Slurrisu project, is about $750,000, and we're in the, nearing completion of another package, which is Luxber and a couple of other big streets in our city, and that is scheduled for 2019 spring term of construction. And you guys also approve a recent project, Old Bejew and Rollins were paving, and that one should be hitting the streets sometime in July. And a couple of projects that we are recommending that we push out to the outer years, one of them is the Millbrae Avenue Bike Bridge Project, the pedestrian over crossing, and that project, we are actively seeking external funding, for example, the ATP cycle for. We are hoping to put in an application for, in some amounts, in more than $10 million for infrastructure and non-infrastructure, and also Route 28 PG&E project, we have about $3 million in credit. Route 28, it is actually an undergrounding project, and we currently have no project planned for that. So, we'll continue to receive credit from PG&E and set the money aside.
At what point do we plan to spend that money?
I would say, no, I think the money should be saved and set aside for perhaps when we go into PDA on El Camino, and some of those are larger projects, and we can look at undergrounding district. We have done one about maybe 20 years ago in our city, up at the north end at Cappuccino.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, it would be interesting in that thought process, these overhead wires, as we progress down those lines, they're very sloppy and just, I mean, extra wires hanging there and all of that stuff, so, and we should be, as we're dealing with them and the cut-down trees, we should add that to the list. Yes, Ms. Schneider?
To add to the undergrounding of wires, since they're still looking at the cause of fires up in Santa Rosa and that area, and the concept of undergrounding, if I read the fire documents correctly, we're looking at the Fire Provincial and the Wildlands interface, that might be an area to look at undergrounding of power lines, so we don't have that type of fire started.
Definitely, Route 28 money is primarily limited to commercial and all regional recreation centers, some regional area, so not eligible in the residential area.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Hollibur?
This is just sort of a general question, but for all these projects that say unfunded, and it looks like most of them are, you know, 2021 and beyond, by unfunded, that means that, is that based off of current revenues? If, you know, based off of the current budget that we have now, if that were to be, you know, the same in 2021, '22, et cetera, we wouldn't have the funding for these projects? Or does it just mean that funding has not been identified yet, or that overall, this, you know, either the reserve balance would have to be increased to be able to fund those, or the various general fund revenues?
A bit of all of the above, so, of course, Public Works is always actively seeking money for projects, and they're pretty successful. At the same time, we started with that $14 million number, and so when that number disappeared, then anything beyond that doesn't have funding today. Now, each year, we'll close the books, there may be new funding identified, it's generally likely that that'll happen, and we don't, we don't tend to overspend our budget, so we'll identify some funding, and we can allocate it to those projects based on priorities at that time. So, and, and then if revenues increase, or we look at some impact fees or that type of thing, then there's other opportunities for gaining, gaining more funds. But as of the funds we have today, and that's what I mentioned earlier, was kind of the new thing for you all to look at and understand, instead of just saying, "Here's what we want to get done," part of it is, how do we do it? So, if it's not funded, it doesn't move forward at this point.
All right, thank you.
So, next, we're going to be looking at parks. So, we are proposing a $100,000 budget for El Camino Real Media Landscaping, we are not doing construction next year, we are going to be developing some concept plans and bring that to our Parks and Right Committee. As many of you know, a lot of the redwood trees are dying on disease, and we had removed a lot of them, and we continue to find more diseased and dead trees, and we'll continue to remove those also. The next, we are...
That's exceptionally sad.
It is very sad, but I think we have to blame that on the drought for the last four or five years, and that caused a lot of damage to those trees.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Sorry, Mayor. In the budget, and I talked to the City Manager, we haven't done a tree study since 1992, we've been through, I don't know how many droughts since then, and when I talked to the City Manager about this budget, we talk about health and safety of the public, and we're talking about police and fire, but trees are an infrastructure too that is valuable, and when we ignore them during times of drought, they die. So, what are we going to do to protect our trees, our urban forest in the future? There's still no money set aside for that tree study, I still don't have an idea. Community Enhancement Advisory Committee has been advocating for this, is there any way, and we could start planning... start planting trees as a climate change activity, but we don't have a baseline of the health of all of our trees. Those are the city trees, as well as the private commercial trees and the private residential trees, and generally, it seems to me better for us to have a starting plan. What do we have, what have we lost? If you look at the sycamores, half of them are going to be gone shortly, they're just hanging on, on a number of streets, and they're danger to anybody walking on those streets besides what they're doing to the sidewalk. And we keep ignoring trees, we keep ignoring them, what are we going to talk about them?
And we can't do the policy part of it now, it is important, we completely agree with it, we have to, you know, deal with the budget before us right now, we can't argue all the policy issues, we just cannot do that right now, we understand that, and it is, should be a priority moving forward, so please, go on.
Actually, I do have some suggestions on that, we are allocating about $250,000 for park master plan implementation, and when we bring the parks master plan to the parking rec and subsequently the city council sometime in August or September, and we can look at using some of that money to look at tree assessment or tree inventory, something like that, and we can talk more about that. And also, as part of the capital for parks division, we are also requesting a $100,000 budget for some landscape improvement at Millbury Museum, and also at Fire Station 38, and some of the little areas outside here at Police Bureau that we just recently completed the ADA upgrade project.
Do you think you can throw in some weed killer for the Bayside Manor Park, which is exceptionally deteriorated, the city manager and I were looking at today, whether it takes a community effort or something? We need to at least put up a sign that if your dog is going to poop there, you're going to get fined. I appreciate the fact there's, but it's really become neglected and debilitated and disservice to that neighborhood, so if you could note that, again, we're not talking about all these issues now, but-
Yes, Mr. Williams and I did talk about that this afternoon, we also discussed the Marina Vista Park as well.
Thank you.
The next item on the parks would be the TDA Article III money, and of that, we received about $470,000 from MTC with a matching of about $200,000, so we are going to be looking at Bay Trail Connection, actually from Millbury Transit Center to Rotary Park, and at the same time, we are going to be proposing to be putting in a walking trail at the Soroptimus Park off of Hillcrest, and that is, I just, I heard Mayor Papen mention this earlier this evening about Dog Park, and actually in the TDA Article III, we are also looking into putting a small Dog Park at the same location there.
And Soroptimus Park?
Correct, and that is right between Millbury and Hillcrest, that little unimproved Any question?
We are working on, your recreation department has identified a grant for Dog Parks that we will be working with, I know it'll easily get a letter of support from leadership here, but we, maybe we can access all of them.
This is policy, and we're already deciding where the park would go?
Nope, he just mentioned, that's what they were thinking of.
So, a few of the incomplete projects from last year, for example, we were hoping to purchase additional Big Belly Trash Reciprocal, but we are not going, going to do that in lights of the budget deficit next year. And same thing with the Spur Trail railing, we didn't finish the project, we actually did not start the project, so we are proposing to not continue with the project to save some money. And same thing with tree grates, we will start buying them because we have some good inventory at the yard that we can use them, and when we need them, we will request funding from council to purchase additional ones. And same thing with Central Park Playground in lights of the rebuild of the rec center, we are proposing that we are not spending a lot of money replacing those playground equipment until we know what we are doing. So, a couple of projects that also, that we were planning last fiscal year, actually still the current fiscal year, one of them is the City Hall Electronic Message Board, I believe, at the May 5th Council Goal Setting Session, we decided to remove the project from current project list. And same thing with ADA Transition Plan, we have a transition plan, the law say that we do not need to complete them right now, so we did identify the deficiency, and those priority area, we will address those as we encounter them.
Do we risk any liability by doing that?
I don't believe so, but I'm going to refer that to the city attorney, we have an ADA Transition Plan, the law say that we are required to have a Transition Plan with no actual implementation date because of lack of funding.
All that I would ask is that legal counsel ensure that we are not exposing ourselves to liability, so please, go ahead.
So, I'm going to just walk down the facility program really quickly, we have the City Hall Campus Program, and that is about $350,000, those are for City Hall Campus Maintenance, including library, that would tell us what kind of useful life we got left in our building, in our structures, and the kind of maintenance activity we need in order to maintain these buildings. And we have some project at Fire Station 38, and that is including installing a new generator, because the current generator is going to expire fairly soon, and also to reroute some facilities, including the Police Bureau.
So, so from the general fund, the funds that don't have, we make transfers to other funds that don't have sufficient funding, or to the Vehicle Replacement Fund, so for storm drain capital projects, which Key will address later, where to complete those projects, we need a $1.6 million transfer, and also, the Vehicle Replacement Fund, during the last fiscal year, we cleaned that up, we got the inventory in order, but identified still some additional inventory as we closed out this fiscal year, so we're recommending a transfer of $282,000 for vehicles in the general fund. What this does is it pre-funds a vehicle, so once we need to purchase that vehicle, the funding is already available in the Vehicle Replacement Fund instead of big swings in vehicle purchases. And then, also another $365,000 associated with storm drain, and that's primarily a generator that's in that fund, that was not included in prior inventory, and two new vehicles are requested in the general fund, one for parks and one for facilities.
And may we remember that if you're buying any vehicles, that they be either hybrids-
They are hybrid, yeah. And we do have three C-Max and one Ford Fusion, and all of them are hybrid vehicle for city use. Next, we're going to be talking about enterprise fund, we're not talking about general fund now. So, we're going to start with sanitation fund, next fiscal year, we are going to be starting a rate studies again for our sanitation fund, if you recall, we did our last studies back in 2015, a five-year rate study, so we're going to be preparing for that next year. And also, we are looking at continuing with our GIS, our Asset Management System, we have a really, really robust system in the sanitation divisions right now, we are hoping to incorporate storm as well as water into the GIS and Asset Management System. And the other big project that we aim to complete next year, it is the lift stations improvement, we have three, we actually have three lift stations in our city, the Hacienda, the Madron, and the Plaza Bay Lift Station, so we are looking at addressing Hacienda and Plaza Bay Lift Station next year.
What kind of stations are they?
Those are lift station, they are pump station. And next, this is our favorite topic, sewer modernization program, we are actually making really great, great progress, we had all our priority basins in contract now, Madron basin one, two, and three is actually nearing completion, and we are going to be starting Hillcrest up basin three, and we're going to be coming back to you for another package of award, that is to address all the structural defects throughout the city, and we are going to be, actually, we came back to you already on one project that we started last year, and that was completed, so I think we are making really good progress on that, and we'll continue to do so. As part of the Baykeeper Consent Decree, we will continue to do maintenance, very aggressive maintenance of our system, we just finished 15 miles of CCTV inspection, we came to you, I believe, at the last meeting, we are doing another 15 miles, and then we are going to be preparing another package for next, next spring, 2019, and we will continue to do flow monitoring in December, and doing flow monitoring, which is to calibrate our hydraulic model, to see how effective our programs are. And we'll continue to do smoke testing, we are coming to you for a project completion report at the next council meeting about smoke testing, and we will continue to do sewer lateral and sewer main replacement besides the outside of the priority basins.
Ms. Oliva?
Do we, do we have in this budget the $1,000 refund for sewer individuals?
Rebate?
A rebate?
Those are all built into the operating budget, and we are going to be restarting a dialogue with the council subcommittee, the subcommittee consists of Ruben and Wingley, and we will be talking to them, we met once before, and then we're going to be proposing something to, for council consideration in the near future.
Mr. Holliver's very excited about that.
I did have a chance to talk to Mr. Holliver in between meetings.
We appreciate your aggressive approach to this, thank you very much.
Thank you. Another, one of the larger project that we are currently looking at is the Madron Pump Station, it actually convey about 5 million gallons of sewage flow a day, so that is a fairly large station, we are going to need to enlarge the station, so we are doing a sequel evaluation right now, and then the other big project following that is to replace our sewer force main going from Madron to the treatment plant, and that is not in the current rate study, will be incorporated into the 2019 sewer rate studies. So, for 2019 fiscal year, we are going to be evaluating the co-gen system, we put in the last co-gen system about 12, 13 years ago, and it's coming to, to near its ends of its useful life, so we are going to have to do another evaluation, so it's going to be another fairly large, big ticket item for council to consider, not next, not the coming up fiscal year, probably two to three years from now. And then, we are currently going to be negotiating some scope of work with West Houston Associate to look at recycle water, reclaim water, in order to prepare the TOD sites to receive recycle water. And then, one other project in the treatment plant is a mechanical thickener evaluation, it is not functioning too right, so we need to do some tweaking to it, so we'll have the manufacturers come in and do some tweaking, and maybe replace some part to it, I don't quite have a cost right now. All right, next is the stormwater division, one of the big thing that we like to accomplish next fiscal year is a common canal pump station rehab, and it is a joint project with City Hall Burlingame, Burlingame is maintaining and the pump station, and they build with some of the maintenance costs, such as electrical costs and stuff like that. So, the cost-sharing formula is that Burlingame, 60% and Millbury carry 40% of the cost, so the pump station is fairly old, and the pumps need to be replaced, and we estimating that to be somewhere in the range of $500,000 to $600,000, that's just our share of the pump station rehab. And recently, we came to find out to our aggressive inspection program of the storm drain system, we got quite a few of broken pipe along Millbury Avenue, so we are in the middle of designing that, and that's going to be another fairly large ticket item too, I think those are going to be somewhere in the range of three-quarter of a million dollars to replace a couple of the storm drain. And the next item is the green infrastructure, we did get a CCAT grant about $212,000, and it is going to be, it's going to be our pilot GI, and it's going to be installed near Taylor Middle School, and that should be done by end of next fiscal year. And again, I mentioned GIS mapping, inventory, asset management, and that is something that we try to bring into our system with the stormwater master plan, and that can be another exciting topic for you to listen, on June 26, we're going to do a presentation on stormwater master plan and tell you how much money we need to fix the system. And one of, one of the big accomplishments from last year was-
You don't have to look so happy about this, we're not excited.
I'm very excited because I love pipeline project, and the design of it. And one of the big accomplishments from current fiscal year is our large trash capture device, and that is part of the NPDES, and we install a capture devices at the Highlight Canal, and that has been done, and we met our MRP, Municipal Regional Permit, we are required to achieve, I believe, is 70%, and we got that.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And tiegate studies and inventory is something that we're going to request some, some money, but I think we're going to rely heavily on the county-wide sea level right task force, because Highlight Canal is part of the critical asset in San Mateo County, and I believe recently, there is a, some sort of interest letter that came out recently from Supervisor Day Pipeline Office, and we did fill out the form, and hopefully, we'll get some assistance in addressing our tiegates and Highlight Canal.
And we asked that, since there's a large number of developments coming into Millbury with a lot of extra dirt that somehow, tell them you got extra dirt, whatever they can do with it, as far as the sea level rising goes. Hopefully not.
So, in the water division, we are not proposing to spend a lot of money, it is coming up fiscal year, like Ms. Hillbrand has explained, we are just slowly and slowly building up our, our cash flow in the water utility, because we did not increase our water rates since 2013, 2013, we've increased our purchase costs from SFPUC, therefore, we are building up the reserve now, so we are going to do sequel evaluation of our three tanks, the two tanks at Skyline Tank Site, and La Prenda at 450 Skyline, and also, we're going to be starting a design project for the next phase of water main replacement.
But clarify for me, though, we are spending money on the system improvements, right?
Correct.
The tanks have been delayed.
The tanks has been delayed, and we're going to be doing design on the next batch of water pipeline in 2019 fiscal year, and the project should be completed in design and go up to construction in early part of 2019.
Yes, Ms.?
Is there a chance of getting any climate change resiliency funding or cap and trade funding for the water tank replacements? Have we looked, do we have people to look?
I have not looked, but I don't think you're going to be able to use that type of funding on water tank, those are most likely going to be geared towards green infrastructure type of project, or flooding type of project, more storm drain type, and we can certainly look, if you have any information to-
I'll pass it.
So, in addition to the significant amount of infrastructure projects we've got planned in the next year, we've got some administrative-type projects, so in the Administrative Services Department, they're working on the document management program, it started with the retention policy that they've worked through partway this year, and then we'll be looking at systems for document management, it goes well with the comment made earlier about retention of documents. In the finance and information technology area, we're, again, looking at the master fee study, we've incorporated the development impact fees, which was kind of a, it's a joint project with all of our departments, community development, it has a focus in that area as well, cost allocation plan, which is how other funds reimburse services of the general fund, and a revenue study, just looking at other options that may be out there for, so just kind of a deep study of all of those things. We're completing the finance system upgrade, again, focused next year on completing utility billing, we're most of the way through that project, we're, we should be going live in the September timeframe with a new formatted utility bill, we'll get some notices out around that. And other information technology upgrades, we had a catastrophic failure of our phone system in the last month or so, we'll be replacing it pretty quickly, it's, it's end of life, so we'll be working on that, as well as we're still finding a number of kind of old servers and that type of thing that put us at security risks, so we, as we've, as we identify them, we get them resolved quickly, and we've used that capital budget to do that. In community development, again, as part of your council goal, we're looking at business improvement- improvement district formation, housing element implementation, completing the update of the general plan. So most of that project has been encumbered this year. So it's just a little bit of funding to complete. We're the lead agency for the stationary comprehensive access plan, encumbered those funds this year. That was approved a couple of months ago. And again, the commitment to the affordable housing project is just included in this department. So we've removed some projects, but again, just looking to develop a plan and identify funding. So the, again, we have a new economic development and housing program, project manager who will look at these items, the downtown improvements, economic development implementation and SFO projects. They were on the prior capital plan, again without much detail, but she'll be developing a plan and then we would come back and identify how to implement that. And also the update of the zoning code, that really follows the general plan. So we've pulled that out and hope to identify funding as we can bring that back. So next steps is to get to a sustainable financial plan. So we're looking, right now we're under contract for a long-term financial projection. One of the things they're waiting on is this budget to be adopted. We want this to be the framework as we've really dug in everywhere we could. So that'll probably be about the time we come back to talk to you more about pension and our other long-term liabilities and costs. Again, the master fee study, can't talk enough about that. And we talked a little bit about these policy considerations. One is the self-help for the elderly. They did a pilot program in March, started in March of this year. At that time, they asked for a fee waiver for space in the room and identified that they would receive funding from the county. A few weeks ago, they asked us to double the number of days and asked for a $30,000 contribution. We suggested that they just keep a single day and that we could contribute $5,000 and we've budgeted that amount. But again, we wanted your policy direction as council. If you had hoped to do something different, we also identified some funding options that they might look at. It was my understanding they expected funding from the county and I don't know if they didn't get enough funding or why it wasn't as much as they thought, or maybe just the doubling of the number of days was pretty impactful. So we wanted to just get your, you know, let you hear from the staff recommendation on that in case you had a different direction you wanted staff to take with them. And then also, we talked early about the Boys and Girls Club ongoing funding. So we will circle up with them and better understand their ongoing need and plan. So I don't know if you want, if that direction is acceptable to you on the self-help for the elderly or if you had any comments on that?
Ms. Oliva.
On the self-help for the elderly, I'd like to give some consideration to the fact that we don't have our community center. And if maybe not in the two, I don't know how long it'll be before that they'll be able to have a meeting spot, but once a week, for me, I think I have a hard time with that. I'd like to see that we, for $30,000, you said, grant?
Yeah, their request was for $30,000 instead of five, to double the number of days of the program. So they are, right now, I think one Monday, or Monday every week. And so they, I don't know what second day they were hoping for.
It's been quite successful. I would, I would, I'd like to, I'd love to take staff direction because I know you've done a lot of homework on it, but I would, I have a real hard time with not allowing for the additional $25,000 for the elderly, given that we don't have a meeting spot.
Okay, Ms. Schneider.
Do we know how many Milbury people are part of that program? Because that program really came from San Mateo, didn't it?
Yes.
So are we-
Mateo has their own program. This is an extension.
So this is for all Milbury people?
I'm not sure they draw the line there, but the need was so great that this was established here as well as the San Mateo.
They do not draw the line. It's not exclusive to Milbury.
Okay. When the $10,000 for the Sheriff's Activity League came up, I went and talked to a number of the community groups that provide similar type services. And I don't, I'm more inclined with staff's position on this one, but I'd love to come back and see how the city treats service groups of all kinds and are we being equitable to all service groups? We've had another service group issue come up where the Boy Scouts pay to rent the check cootie room and then they were charged, asked to pay a $55 setup fee for each time. And yet, well, and a number of those Boy Scouts aren't from Milbury. So how we evaluate that, but just how are we treating all service groups? Are we being equitable?
And I think, again, in our kind of interim fee study that we talked about, so for example, we need to get some documented fees around the new spaces, but we have talked a little bit about that and would, you know, we'll bring back some recommendations and seek some direction. It is kind of a complex area. So we, you know, we'll do some staff work on our side and try to bring something forward. What we identified, again, this was when recreation really dug in, they realized that, for example, an entity that was renting the room annually wasn't paying that setup fee, but a fee in the fee schedule can only really be waived by council. And so we notified those entities, but we do think we'll need a staff to come back here and look at our current fee structure. The Parks and Rec Commission had done some work. We'll be circling back with them as well.
Okay, I'm inclined to go with the staff recommendation at this point in time to be readdressed in the future. I'm not sure, Mr. Hollibur, how you feel?
Yeah, I agree. I think one day a week is sufficient for this program at this time.
And I will, and I do appreciate staff proposing alternative funding measures. I think solidifying this at one point in time. We also have meals on wheels throughout Milbury as well. And the senior luncheon. So thank you.
We will be bringing back as a proposal for the fee waiver for the room and then the budget is within this budget that you'll be adopting.
I think you have a majority that agrees with the recommendation.
And then I, my understanding is on the Boys and Girls Club. We'll communicate with them on their longer-term plan. We discussed that earlier.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, well, we're coming to a conclusion. So in your resolution, the requested actions are to authorize the budget actions. You've got an exhibit of what revenues and expenses we're proposing within each fund. Some are combined together. Authorizing staff to increase revenues and expenses and development-related costs when the developers pay the cost in advance. So rather than coming back for those changes and causing time on the developer and additional work on staff, if we've got the funds, we'd like to make those changes.
No, I do have an issue with that one. Okay. Staff was put under a great deal of pressure with the current developments. My concern is that it's just placed in staff's hand. The developers are going to then take a free wheel and think they can just pressure staff all they want. I understand the efficiency aspect of this, but I want to send a clear message to a developer that just because something like this is incorporated and staff gets to make these decisions, that they can't sit there and bully our staff. I think this is exceptionally important. The issue's coming up right now with the shuttle study, that this developer thinks he can do it during the summer when the shuttles are not really fully operating. So, you know, there's certain messages that I want clear, that staff is representing the city of Milbury in the best interests of Milbury. I am concerned that if this type of-
So what this is generally directed at, so this doesn't give contract authority. So if it's a contract over $50,000, we would be back with you. But if a developer comes in and has a project, for example, a $25,000 project that's within a contract that the city already has available and approved, we would, they would, staff and community development would notify finance who would change the revenue and budget picture. This was adopted last year as well as a process so that we're tracking the deposits and assuring that the projects keep moving.
Well, I mean, when you mentioned things like a traffic study here, okay, this was before your time and everybody else's, but when the station plan came in, I thought that traffic study was lacking. I thought the parking study was lacking and these were projects that were approved. So when there's a significant impact on the city, things like that, that's the part that just concerns me. I don't know that every aspect of this, you know, plan check, that's not my area. But when you're talking about something that's going to impact the city like a traffic study or a parking study, those are just the tiny little elements that historically I thought were lacking. And it's not because of staff, but it's who was contracted with and the results that we got. So if we could have some sort of just concern or just those type of issues that we can ensure Milbury is appropriately represented in those studies, that's just my one concern. Those type, everything else, I don't have a problem with. Mr. Hollibur?
Yeah, I don't think this request really has anything to do with who funds the study or who selects, you know, a consultant for a study unless I'm reading this wrong.
Specifically develop related expenses such as expedited plant, traffic studies. I mean, as long as we're clear on the scope and-
We're not saying that the developer necessarily is the one that selects, you know, who does the study.
Well, again-
Actually, council did.
So what it does is it authorizes the change-
Right, it was before my time when council did that and it was just lacking exceptionally. So as long as we have some sort of security in that realm.
Okay.
Prior council has problems.
Well, there's no security because it's not what you're talking about. So-
I understand that now. So.
Okay.
So we're asking for a rollover of outstanding encumbrances for capital programs or contracts that are already issued. Authorizing transfer of budgets, so within the same fund and the same accounts. So for example, you know, department may go slightly over in a training budget, but there could be funds available on office supplies. Those are the type of things that typically are done at department head level. Capital project, the same funding source or type. Again, sometimes those are typically brought before you as they occur. And operating capital budgets for the same department if funded by the same funding source or type. And then authorize update of the position control tables, which is the attachment to the resolution.
So. I don't have any issues with that. Does any other council members have issues with what's being proposed? I would ask that in the future, if you could give us further information on the debt service amounts and terms, just out of curiosity, if that's possible?
Yes.
If there's ever an end to debt service? And I'd also like an analysis on doing away with city council pensions. Our state legislators, again, do not receive pensions. I'm not sure why city council members get them. Ours is a part-time job. Okay, so if you could let us know what kind of savings. It's pretty minimal, but hey, every bit counts. Yes, Ms. Schneider?
I'm ready to approve this, but I've talked to the city manager about my concern. Besides from U-turns in front of Dean's Market, the number one, number two concern I question and complaint is how well the median strips are maintained, the library landscaping is maintained, any of our landscaping is maintained. And I'm still not sure we have adequate staffing for recreation. So one of the things that the city manager and I talked about was, are there more opportunities? And maybe this is my only time to talk to Park and Rec, of figuring out how we might do things as a community. So a little bit of stone soup in there. If we looked, last night after Culture Arts, we looked at the various landscaping in the library parking lot and frankly, how it's a trip and fall hazard. It's dangerous there. Could we do a project with public works, with the public and get these areas brought up to speed with the current budget that we have and the current staffing? But I think the public would be really happy if we could make some big improvements on those highly visible areas. If not, I'm happy to support more staff to help do that maintenance work because I get so many complaints about that. That's my only issue with the budget.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Your votes, please.
Item number nine passes with a vote of 4-0 with Vice Mayor Lee excused.
We'd like to thank staff for all their hard work on all of this and their efforts throughout. I think we've actually given the clear message, if additional staff is needed, please let us know. Thank you. Moving on, one more item here before a closed session. So, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement to support Milbury Community Television. Ms. Lewis?
Good evening, mayor and council members. This evening, we have the agreements with MCTV for your consideration. MCTV provides the broadcasting and video channel management services to the city of Milbury as well as there is a grant agreement in support of MCTV. The current agreements we have with MCTV will expire on June 30th of this year. Staff has met with the MCTV board president and executive director and as well as with one of the board members to discuss the agreements that are before you this evening. And I want to point out that the new agreements are similar to the previous versions, but there are some differences which I will outline. And I'd also like to state that MCTV is here. They do have a presentation for you. So depending on how you'd like to structure this, we can give the presentation and then allow them to come up and speak. And then if you have questions or if you'd like to answer, ask questions while I'm speaking.
If you could just point out the grant discrepancies or changes.
These are, this is for MCTV. This is their agreement. But I'll just point out, in the grant agreement, basically the change that is there is we're changing to monthly invoicing from the quarterly invoicing that they previously had. And we've removed language that was related to the storage of the mobile production unit. The MCTV is no longer using city property to park the mobile production unit. With the broadcasting and the agreement amount stays the same in $51,000. With the broadcasting services, you will notice a difference in that the charges are spelled out on the exhibit, spelling out the monthly charges and the new charges that they, the monthly charges for the service and also for other special services if we have special meetings that we would like to have above the, and beyond the regular council meetings that we hold. We would also be doing an invoicing monthly, not quarterly for this one as well. And basically the, let's see here, I'm sorry. As I said, the rate schedule is included into the agreement, which has a level of detail that was requested by the council in the past. So moving forward, the agreement will contain the specific rate information. The agreement for broadcasting is based on the 2017 meetings that we had. So it was all of the council meetings, special meetings, workshops, et cetera, that we did, that they did for the city. And that would bring the total estimated amount to $55,000 for fiscal year 1819. And then there would be a 3% increase to $56,650 for fiscal year 1920. So moving ahead at this point, we're just asking for your consideration to approve these two agreements. And this concludes staff's presentation.
And the justification for the 3% increase?
It is just the cost of living, a CPI, the 3% annual increase for that is what they had requested. So we have given that to them in the past. So that is something that's similar that we included in this year's agreement.
Okay, questions?
Two years or three years ago, I can't remember how long ago, I was a board member of MCTV, so full disclosure there. During contract, fairly nasty contract negotiations, MCTV was required to start doing an annual financial audit by a CPA. I think that's about $4,000 out of what, a $50,000 contract? Is there a way that we can come up with good oversight of the funds but not require that level of an audit for a contract that's so tiny?
It is public funds, so we do require that.
Okay, how is Penn TV, what does Penn TV do for their customers and perhaps MCTV, when they come and give their presentation, they can talk about how Brisbane, South City, San Carlos, I think those are the cities that you work for. How do they handle their financial auditing ability? It just seems to me an onerous expense.
Okay, we'll hear from MCTV now.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. Dana Sahai with MCTV. I want to take a minute to introduce my board here tonight. President Tom Doughty, Joe Terese, Rod Passion, Jean Hinterman, Randy Sahai, and Dennis Ng. So thank you to the board for being here tonight. It's really important that we're here and thank you for keeping- It's really important that we're here, and thank you for keeping us at the end so we could all make it. Oh, Randy Kramer, sorry. I'm looking at Trent. Sorry about that. So thank you for having me here today. I'm just going to give you a brief overview on what we've done for the community this past year with the help of the city, along with some other generous sponsors in the community. We're a 21-year-old independent nonprofit started by residents seeking to provide the community with open access to local government meetings. More than two decades later, MCTV manages the Millbrae Television Station and online channels while producing station and remote productions for the community. We aim to encourage civic engagement throughout the community. We create content that educates and strengthens bonds in our diverse community, and we encourage people to use video as a means of telling their own stories. Our achievements this year, I'm really proud to say that in March, MCTV won best live production among Western United States Public Access stations for its coverage of the 2017 Art and Wine Festival. We were finalists in two other categories. We competed with stations from Hawaii with budgets of $8 million and the like.
Did you get any money with that?
Did we get any money? No. We got a pretty plaque, it's hanging in the office, come by, check it out. Continuing MCTV's tradition of adopting new technology, this year, we were among the first community media stations in the state to introduce a Roku channel, allowing people to watch recorded public meetings on their TV without access to public, to cable. We also produce almost all public meetings to YouTube Live, allowing people to tune in from anywhere. They could be on their commute home, on the train, and watching the meeting.
Exciting.
With prudent spending and a strong focus on fundraising, MCTV was able to purchase new cameras and equipment that improved our recorded picture quality and the efficiency of mobile productions. You'll see a picture here of our new mobile flypack, and you've also probably seen me around town with a small mobile unit with my cellphone that I can conduct interviews anywhere. As we add more ways to watch and more engaging videos, our online viewership has increased. We shared a record 121 videos online last year. That's an average of two to three videos a week, and people are spending more time watching those videos, up from four and a half to five and a half minutes. That's pretty good in this era of social media. MCTV is easily one of the most prolific community media stations in the area. While other stations lease their studio to independent producers, we're out acting as our own producer, telling the good news in Millbrae. We've worked with over two dozen community organizations this year alone. MCTV is able to cover important historical events in the city, like the annual man, woman, student of the year dinner, the tree lighting, and grand opening of the current Recreation Building. In keeping with our mission, we often cover interesting speakers at the library, at the school. We invite officials to the studio for interviews. They record public service announcements as well. And very important that we're current and we're local. When news recently broke at the YouTube campus in San Bruno, we were on scene for press conferences. The week people learned that Facebook users' personal information was being used by an election campaign firm, we filmed a two-hour discussion about fake news that included speakers from Google, Facebook, and Stanford. That video is now airing nationwide from Truckee to DC. And we are especially proud of Take Notice. It's a show airing twice a month that highlights important issues in San Mateo County. We've recorded, I think around three dozen, maybe closer to four dozen, episodes already, and we've been airing them since February. The show brings county officials to Millbrae, to the Millbrae Studio, and gains interest from viewers countywide. This show is produced by four very dedicated volunteers who host and produce the show. And like I said earlier, MCTV is available on laptops, phones, tablets. You can watch any of our videos anytime, anywhere. We're online, including YouTube, Facebook Live, and we're delivering content to Roku. We continue to grow our online audience with this, which is both useful and it's very challenging with our limited resources. Talking about challenges, we are managing our channel right now with a playback server from 2005. To put that in perspective, that's the year the Motorola Razr was the hot new flip phone. That's when Apple introduced the iPad, iPod Nano in color, right? That was a big thing. You'd be challenged to find those technologies in use today, but MCTV is still limping along with the same server as it did in 2005. It makes it really challenging to produce our live television and our online content with something that's so old. That piece of equipment is roughly going to cost us around $15,000. We're trying to bring it down from there, but that's a reality. Equipment has already broken on that piece of equipment, and we've had to replace it. When it stops working, the station in Millbrae stops working, so it's vital that we replace it. Fifteen, one five. I'm really glad it's not fifty. Yeah. And you know, some of the other challenges we face is just funding in the way cable franchise agreements are currently formed and managed through the state, and the challenges of running a nonprofit in the Bay Area. But we're able to do it because of contributions from the city and from our generous sponsors that I have here and independent donors who show up to our fundraising events, like the one we had last week. Thank you to some of you who showed up.
Trivia contest was fixed.
And we hope to have it again soon, so you'll get a chance at redemption. So that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer any of them.
Can you clarify for us which cities you are contracting out to and the additional fundraising events, such as your trivia contests, which I compliment you on doing so?
So I can tell you that we currently contract with the city of Brisbane, the city of San Mateo, the city of San Carlos, the Millbrae School District, Elementary School District, and SFO Roundtable Committee. I'm probably forgetting someone. It's late.
I'm sure they're.
And what question did you have about fundraising that I can answer?
So I'm aware you had your trivia contest, you had an open house. Are you having any other fundraising events?
Yeah, so we're trying to do an annual fundraising event, resources to actually manage a fundraising event. As you know, it's tough. So I think we'll stick with one main event, but we have a campaign all year long for donations. We've introduced online giving, so anyone can give online. They can give via our newsletters that go out regularly, and they have been, since I came on to board, I've seen an increase in online giving. People who click the donate button in our emails or go to our website and donate there.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Schneider.
So Ms. Sahai, how does Brisbane, San Mateo, San Carlos, Millbrae School District and the Roundtable audit your finances?
They don't. We are simply a contract for service with them. I understand the city of Millbrae gives us a grant and.
That's the difference, the grant.
Receiving a grant often requires a financial review of some sort. But I would agree, and I do request of the council to consider some sort of lesser requirement in terms of maybe just an accountant can do it. Or are our 990s sufficient for your review? The cost to do our last two financial reviews has been the equivalent of buying that new server that I was talking about, that playback server. It's a lot of money for a small organization, and I can tell you, organizations of our size are not usually required to have such an in-depth financial review. It just seems more prudent to use our money for programs.
And that's an annual cost. It's every year, so the grant is $50,000. I'm getting the grant and the contract confused, so it's $4,000 out of $50,000 every year? Or other donated dollars, so.
Yeah, it's $4,000 of our annual revenue.
The other question I had, and it was more of a budget question, but I didn't ask it, was PEG funding. I know PEG funding is complicated. It seems really sad that it's down to $500 a year, and I'm wondering if we have used our lobbying resources, whatever they might be, to look at the federal budget and figure out how we're going to keep public access going when we're losing those kinds of funds. So I think that had been a question. It's $500. There was a question whether, or how we collect it from Comcast versus AT&amp;T. I haven't had a chance to look at my bill to see if I'm still being charged. We have U-verse, there are so many little charges in there, it's, there's nothing that's called PEG. So I don't know what we're paying, but I would be happy to be paying, but maybe we need to go to a lobbyist for that and look for additional sources of funds.
So we are looking into, the Comcast franchise has paid out all the PEG fees that they've owed, so there's nothing more coming there. We recently renewed our divka with AT&amp;T, the ordinance that we have, and I have reached out to AT&amp;T because I'm looking for the PEG fees with them, and I have a question into the city attorney's office to assist in reviewing that, so they can answer some questions regarding the PEG monies there, and then we'll be able to move ahead with that. But there's something that we are looking at right now to make sure that we are getting that.
Okay, I see that the mayor's already made a motion for this, so there's no way to talk about the possible modification of the contract in terms of an accountant versus a CPA doing an annual audit. Is that something that can be renegotiated after the fact? Or would the mayor be open to amendment to her motion?
Well, the mayor was going to suggest that MCTV discuss with legal counsel maybe a lesser requirement, but it is a grant, as is, and we have certain requirements there. So I'm open to your dealing with legal counsel so that we can maintain the grant and maybe at a lesser level of accountability. But I'm not sure what the grant terms are, so I can't say that, but I would hope that you can work with legal counsel, maybe to lessen the burden. But again, there are certain requirements as to a grant, so I encourage open communication there. Yes?
I would support that. I would be concerned a little bit, does it include the filing of a nonprofit as well? Those fees?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The $4,000 covers just what you supply to us, or it covers your filing of your?
It covers our entire organization.
The $4,000?
Yeah, so. Would you like to clarify the question?
I think she wants to know if that's part of your nonprofit filings.
No, we don't. We have to file a 990 as a nonprofit. That's just our tax.
And he does.
Yeah, that's absolutely. We don't.
And I believe you have to file with the Secretary of State, which is something like 60 bucks or something, is a yearly thing.
Yeah, we hire CPA firm to do our 990. It's an additional charge, if you want a financial review, of approximately $4,000.
That's what I was asking.
Okay.
So my motion stands, and I ask that you please try to make a suggestion. I don't know what the grant obligations are. If we can. Have a lesser review, then we'll hope that you can work with legal counsel on that.
And then bring that back to council at some point for an amendment?
Oh yeah, I mean, if that's possible this year, that's fine. Right now, I thought we'd get this passed and, you know.
I would be open to that.
So we have a motion and a second. Can I have your votes on this? As the hour gets late.
Item number 10, passed with a vote of four to zero with Vice Mayor Lee excused.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to council comments. We keep them short, we have a closed session. Mr. Oliver?
I will pass.
Ms. Schneider?
Hopefully, staff will be contacting the mayor so that we can have a bicycle sharing meeting coming up. At the last CCAG Bicycle Pedestrian Meeting, they are going to be requiring actual minutes taken of actual bike pedestrian meetings as a qualification for receiving grants, and I just want to make sure that we are doing those. The other option, and this is more for the school district, I met a gentleman from Specialized Bicycle, which is in Morgan Hill. They would like to work with middle schools, there's potential grant funding for middle schools to get more kids to ride their bikes. So if we can have that meeting, we can talk about some additional funding opportunities.
Thank you, Ms. Aliva.
Just to make this very quickly, I attended the last Oversight Board meeting for ever and ever and ever, so the redevelopment funds have all been scurried out. Also went to a SAL, Sheriff's Activity League Strap Planning, for a day last week, and from that, on June 27th, a Millbrae resident will be hosting a fundraiser for our Sheriff's Activity League, and if anybody's interested, it's at 5 o'clock, it's local, and I would love attendance.
Okay. Congratulations to the school district and all the residents that helped and the council members, everybody who helped on passage of their parcel tax with a glorious 74%. It backed up to 75%. That's pretty darn amazing. So we look forward to that improvement. And the Commission on the Status of Women had a meeting here at our library, and they also have a wonderful computer program so that everyone can see the women who have been elected as Women of the Year and actually, I think, Youth of the Year for the past 15-some years, including my mom. So for all the community work that have come out of all of San Mateo County, some absolutely amazing women are being recognized there. For the tragic incident that happened on El Camino where the young lady was hit by a cab, there is a GoFundMe page for Laura Perez. The Medical Recovery Fund would encourage, their goal is to reach $15,000. They are at 7,100 now, so she has a daughter and is still, I think she's being removed to a rehabilitation center, where she'll undergo extensive rehabilitation for mental and physical injuries suffered as a result of that. So please, GoFundMe Laura Perez. And let's see here, we are going to close this night in memory of two individuals, and I have it here, where do we go here? In memory of Millbrae resident Rita Azapardi. So to Ron and Rick, our thoughts and prayers are with you. She passed away on May 17th. And then, more regionally speaking, Steve Penya, who was a longtime publisher of the Redwood City Spectrum Magazine, passed away suddenly on June 1st. Thoughts and prayers go out to both of their families. And we will be closing now to go into closed session.
That is correct. The council has calendared a closed session this evening, and it is a closed session, personal closed session, to discuss the recruitment of a permanent city manager.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.